Call to order the meeting of October 28th. You all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perhaps I should introduce the translator. We'll be doing it again later, but let's start with that. We have Esperanza Villegas with us tonight for translation. And we can go into our first item here.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas, y esta noche estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes necesita ayuda, me puede localizar en la parte trasera de esta sala.
Thank you. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired. Announcements of closed session items, actions. Oh my gosh, I left it in the other room, didn't I?
Well, before we go to that, that's really to take place at seven. We're going into our special meeting on board focus goals.
Oh, I see. Okay, so I don't have to do that right now.
So we can launch into that first.
Okay, so what we're doing, we're going over to, we're going right to here. Okay, okay. So we're going to have a discussion until about seven o'clock on board focus goals. We were hoping to have a little bit more time, but we have some time here. We've gone through this a few times. The last comment was, if I remember, was we've got, they're too long. And I'm not sure where to go from here, so.
Well, perhaps I can orient you to the materials. We have yet again another draft of the goals that we had talked about. We included a number of areas that board members had commented on. In some places, they're all underlined. In some places, there are question marks about them. In special education, board members had asked for draft language having to do with students and what we're accomplishing with students. We've included those. And toward the end of the discussion, we had our own discussion about whether these, whether there were too many of them. In the interim, Kate Parker, who is not with us tonight, submitted a set of draft focus goals, and you'll see that as an attachment. It follows the draft four version that would reorient these to some of the highlighted areas and really pare them down in number. So, we have two documents, and I think that can provide the basis for our discussion.
Minds are hard at work. I happen to agree that shorter is better and that we might be able to take care of a great deal in the first paragraph and then make it a bit simpler in the, in the other goals. I like the communication goal that was added. It was something that, that I had raised, and Ms. Parker actually articulated it very well. But one addition that I would like to make, here we're talking about adding words, no matter what the first paragraph is regarding student achievement, I'm wondering if we should add the words grade level profici-- well, it has grade level proficiency in here, in core content areas. Add the words in core content areas. So that the sentence would read, it's the second sentence, "We are committed to closing the gap between subgroups of students and ensuring grade level proficiency in core content, proficiency or above, in core content areas for all of our students," et cetera.
Is that going to be a federal adequate?
No, 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 just adding in core content areas. You're talking about the reference before that.
But you're talking in--
I'm sorry, Ms. Hardi.
I'm looking at the first introductory paragraph.
Correct.
Okay. One thing missing off of Ms. Parker's list, I, this is wonderful in that it's shorter and that it's more concise, but one thing is to ensure student engagement. And we were, I thought that was an interesting new addition to our goals. And I'm not sure where to put that. It was being put under effective instructional practices.
Well, I have, I have a quick question regarding that, and that is, the two potential additions, culturally proficient instruction and ensure student engagement. How would you measure that? How would you?
Well, you could look at something we've never really looked at so much before is about clubs and sports activities and--
We've actually looked at that a number of times before at the high school level.
Yeah, it's how to do the--
But we're talking about, when you say ensure student engagement, I'm talking about engagement in classes.
Yeah, yeah.
As opposed to, okay, I'm, I'm on a team or I'm in the band.
Well, I took that to mean kind of both, that if we could somehow get kids involved in schools more in whatever, in ever, in, in all different kinds of ways, that that would be a benefit to them. But you're right.
You know, I don't disagree with that, but to me, if we're really talking about student engagement, we're talking about students who are coming to school--
To learn.
--and learning something, and then there's some demonstration of what that engagement is. So when you use the term student engagement, you either need to explain what you mean and then also include some goal. I, I have no idea how you measure student engagement.
Well, would we measure student engagement by fewer truancies or fewer absences, more homework submitted, fewer failing grades? Is that the kind of thing you had in mind, or?
Potentially, yes.
So I'm wondering if we could, we, I think we could devise a way to measure it. If we, if we wanted to measure those. I think grades would be an interesting way to, to look at student engagement, homework completed.
I, I really think the task in front of the board is trying to pare down version four of the draft and, and decide what are higher priorities. It's a long list. And the more balls that you have up in the air that you're trying to juggle, the harder it is to keep your eye on them.
May I suggest, one way that that can be done is to have each board member prioritize items, or at least come up with their top five, go to a tally of those and, and see where that leaves us.
You're, you're talking about prioritize the bullets--
Yes.
--under each one. Okay.
I want to make, I want to make sure I understand. Prioritize the bullets. You're saying come up with our top five for the entire thing, or within each, within each? For example, would we have five under number one, and five under number two, and five under number three?
No, I, I think if I understand Dr. Sarvis. Well, first of all, I think, I don't, I think we're all in general agreement that the headings that we have, student achievement, English learner success, et cetera, we want to keep. And the question is the growing number of bullets under each larger focus area. And I think Dr. Sarvis was talking about prioritizing those bullets and then deciding which ones we want to keep.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Go ahead.
I have a few thoughts as I look at it. They're not very good ones. I see a complete abandonment of focus goals concerning performance, student performance as measured by the California Standards Test. Those are, those are measures upon which we are judged, both by the state and by the federal authorities. I see what looks like a quota, increased participation of underrepresented students in Gate Advanced Courses in academies by a minimum of 10%. And I have to wonder what happens if there are not 10% who are qualified. I see, I see, I don't understand how this, what this has to do with a focus goal, and maybe I just don't understand focus goals, but Institute Board Retreat for Training in Brown Act and Robert's Rules of Orders and Agenda Planning. I think that's a great idea, I just--
Dr. Noah, do you realize this is Mrs. Parker's? This is what she--
Oh, this is not the basis for our discussion?
No.
No.
This is version four, draft version four, but these were Ms. Parker's--
Oh, okay.
--suggestions.
Well, I was kind of going by yours--
Got it.
--and you were, and you were going by that one. Well, then I'm quarreling with, that's great, I can win that argument. She's not here. Great, okay, on to the next point. I had, I had proposed, and I, back to the first, the first version then, I certainly think it's a mistake to delete the goal of similar schools rank of eight, of eight or higher. And indeed, I suggested that, that that ran, that that goal should apply to every subgroup individually.
I, I think we're--
That's a po--
No, I just, what I, all I was going to say is that it's, I would agree with you, but I think that we're going to have to come back at this again, probably to the chagrin of some of my fellow board members, in order to prioritize the bullets and then have a discussion surrounding that.
It's, it seems like something we can't do right now. You're right, and it would be difficult. And what we need to do is go home and do some homework and actually sit there and prioritize each of these. Is it that we would keep them all, once we prioritize them, and maybe put them in order, or is it that we're trying to eliminate?
Well, I think it might help if we had, at, at least it would help me, if I had a clearer sense of what we actually do with our focus goals. Because--
That would help.
I feel like, like, as a goal, the initial statements are pretty, pretty inclusive. The bullets seem to be sort of like implementation strategies. They're, they're kind of action plans for how we're--
Evaluation tools.
Or, well, or evaluation tools, for how we are going to achieve the goal. And so if we're, if we're creating an action plan, then the number of bullets are significant because it means that's what we're going to be doing. If our, if we're really just creating the goal, and there's going to be other discussions at cabinet, at sites, with, maybe with the board as well, et cetera, for how to implement it, then it seems to me that maybe we could remove the bullets and just settle on the Because we don't seem to have a lot of disagreement over what the actual goals are. Seems to me that the major question is just whether or not to add communication.
Well, I'll go against that for just a second, in that I think these are goals, if we get rid of the bullets, then basically we have goals that we could have forever. They're not something that's going to be accomplished in a year. And what we, I, I have always argued, and that's why I'm kind of struggling with this, is that we should have kind of goals that we need, that are just for always, and keep, keep on ta-- And then maybe a few things that we want to just talk about this year.
Annual targets, you mean?
Yes, that we can check off and they're gone.
Yeah, sure.
But we've had things like--
Achieving GAAP, for example.
But we've had things like that on our, on our lists, that are no longer here. A facilities master plan. You know, some years it was technology, or it was, you know, we've had different issues that we've kind of targeted for meetings. Now, I'm having difficulty because I'm not going to be here for this year to do those things, so I don't really feel comfortable saying, you should have a list that covers these things. So I have no problem with this list because it's something that will go on forever.
May I, I think you've put your finger right on it. I, I think this ought to wait for the new school board.
I actually, I, I, I mean, we've had some of this discussion before, but I disagree. While our time is short, our remaining time is short, I think when you're talking about seating a new school board and trying to have this same discussion, I don't think that you're going to come up with anything for a minimum of another six months.
I tend to agree with Nancy because I think, I came on the board, I think the board was in the middle of adopting new focus goals and, or, or maybe had just adopted new focus goals. We were in the, I think in the middle of implementing them, or trying to. And I, I just feel like this is a, we've already been struggling with this for a long time. This could go on for a very long, for, you know, much longer. And I would rather see the new board be able to grapple with, how are we going to do this?
Well, I think that the, the timing issue is important because we talked about trying to accomplish this in October so that the focus goals were in place for the oncoming budget season. And then it would be institutionalized, and then they would be revisited each September, October.
And if we want to get to where I have been hoping we would get to, which is that our, our educational plan, which certainly would include the focus goals, influences the budget development, rather than tails, trails behind it. We have to get it in place because the budget is going to be coming up very soon. And I think if we wait and wait and wait, we're going to again be behind the budget cycle, and the, our, our educational plan is going to be sort of separated from how we develop the budget. And I think that's a real mistake.
We're, we're moving ahead. That's, I think we're kind of settled on that, but I still don't know exactly--
You are, I, I'm still debating.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I actually am having more trouble with it than you are.
In my, as I look down these, I don't see a single point on here about which a new school board member could not have an opinion if it's about goals and targets. In fact, I haven't been in any of the forums, but I would guess that a lot of the conversation has been about goals and targets. And it's not that we're writing a, a set of guidelines for the budgeteers, because we're talking about fairly global kinds of things. Should we be trying to increase student achievement by some measurable amount? That's not--
But it seems to me that if we're, I mean--
Should, should English learners gain one proficiency level annual, annually? Is that, that's--
But, well, I guess my concern goes, then goes back to the original question of why, what are we using the focus goals for? Because if we identify that we want English language learners to gain one proficiency level, then we should be building something into the budget that supports that happening. Or at, you know, or at the very least, when we, when it comes time to perhaps look at mid-year cuts, we should be able, we should be using that as a basis on which we make some decisions. So I think our focus goals should have fiscal implications for us. Otherwise, I kind of agree with, with Ms. Malakoff that we could just basically have the same ones year after year, if they're not really making a difference in terms of how we make our other, our other decisions. I don't want to be cavalier about that, because obviously it does make a decision, a difference in terms of where we focus our time in the classroom, et cetera. But I think, well, I have just argued for, since I've been on the board, that educational plans, our educational goals should drive our budget and not the other way around. And I, I just think that that--
Mrs. Cordova, I, I think, and I, I understand that position, and it is a time-lonied position. But there's just a world of experience and research, in fact, in, in public administration that suggests that budgets have their own dynamic, that the best predictor of what this year's budget is, is last year's budget plus 10%. That there's, that, that there's momentum, that what you're, and I agree with you. I think we, I would rather stop that momentum and say, here, we have some goals, let's do some zero-based budgeting. Here are the goals, here are some programs that don't seem to be contributing to those goals. Get, don't fund them, put the funds over here and that. We're a long, long way from that, and my guess is there's no political will for zero-based budgeting on this board. I haven't seen it in 10 years.
Well, I'm not sure I agree that zero-based budgeting is the only way to, to influence the budget with, with educational goals. But I also think that this year is very important because we are facing such a, such a potentially lean budget, that we are going to be having to make some decisions. And this is, I think this would be an important use for focus goals. If they're not going to, if we want them to be more than just something we put up on a plaque, and we want them to actually be meaningful in our, in our decisions, in how we manage the district, I think they have to get in place in time for us to be able to use them appropriately. So, well, I'll, I mean, I, I, I've said what I, what I think. I'd kind of like to hear what other members think if we're going to go forward with this.
Do you want public speakers now?
Public speakers, okay. Is that all right? Okay.
We have two public speakers on this item. Kate Smith, followed by Ed Heron.
My name is Kate Smith. I'm a credentialed secondary school teacher, 1973, before the Ryan Act, from UC Berkeley. And I've helped to start four schools, from elementary to high schools, in California. With No Child Left Behind, the assessment tools and evaluation techniques were changed. And all of a sudden, in terms of student achievement, we were talking about testing what has been taught, as opposed to learning what the child, the student, has learned. The educational mission was corrupted by No Child Left Behind. I weep when I hear you talk about truancy, homework, and grades in terms of student achievement and engagement. I'm a teacher. When we talk about engagement, do you know what we're talking about? We're talking about making sure that the child has a path to lifelong learning. We're talking about prompting and guiding the student to follow his or her bliss. Without a passion for learning, without the engagement, there is no hope for the whole child. And that's what we're talking about. When we talk about engagement, we're talking about the mind, body, and the spirit of a There was a comment at the forum from a community member that said they had heard a lot about student achievement and gang violence and the gap. He said, "I have not heard one thing about education, and with all due respect, in the discussion of the focus goals, I have not heard one thing about education." Thank you.
Thirty seconds.
Hi, Ed Heron. I look at the focus goals and I agree with almost everybody. You know, it's, it's a budgetary issue, and so if you're thinking focus goals, you better know, you know, how it affects the budget. What are focus goals? Bob, I agree, I, I don't know what focus goals are, so I might be way off in left field. Why this board? In 45 days, there's going to be at least two new members. The last time you did focus goals was 2006, it appeared, and before that was 2003. So I guess one of my questions would be, I think Annette, or someone said, what have we done with the last ones? You know, what did we do at 2006 goals in 2007? Do we have, I don't know, did we have a recording of how we did in 2007? You know, do we have a recording of how we did? You know, it'd be interesting for us to see that, or me to see that, for sure. But my, my big issue is technology. And I don't know where that fits into focus goal, but if you're going to have a budgetary issue and technology is important, I think we need to deal with technology in some way. It's a tool, but it needs to be incorporated into this. Just today, I read that the Broad Prize winner, the most improved urban district is a school district in Texas, and they increased dramatically. And they said, "We try to use as much technology as we can to impact education in the core areas." And you mentioned core areas. I've been told that business people would be shocked if they knew the state of technology in this school district. I've read thoughts of one tech, a business representative, who says that the network in the school district is crumbling, that technology is in state of disrepair. There's a 119-page tech report that I'm told won't be implemented because there's no budgetary, it's not a priority, there's no budget. If we're going to educate our children in the 21st century, they need technology. And I think somewhere in your focus goals, or someplace, you know, I know there's a 1998 strategic plan that has a big segment on technology, but after visiting 15 schools, I can here to tell you that there's a lot of people who don't think we accomplished very much in 10 years in the area of technology. Other items, but only briefly, we have 16,000 students to educate, and that focus goals need to clearly state what we are going to do to educate, educate all of them. You might even want to separate out some very specific secondary goals--
Thirty seconds.
--and primary goals. The other issue that has come up dramatically is the issue of neighborhood schools. And you may want to have a focus goal on trying to do everything possible to make our neighborhood schools truly the neighborhood school, and incorporate into your, your plans things that we can do to eliminate desire to find another school. It seems to be a big issue. So there's a lot of different focus goals, and this one seems, it seems to be building year after year on the same things, and maybe it's time to set back and say, hey, let's look at the whole issue and determine exactly what focus goals are supposed to be and how do we measure them.
Thank you, Mr. Heron.
We have about eight minutes before we want to go on with the other part of the meeting. Where do we go from here?
Well, I guess I would suggest that we go home and do a little bit of homework before the next meeting. I, I, I think that, you know, I, I, you know, particularly when you look at the overall student achievement goal, I would be hard-pressed to prioritize those goals. But I could certainly go through some of these others and, and find it very easy to prioritize and stake out some, some territory on, on what I would think would be most critical. That would be my suggestion in moving forward. And the next time we meet, we would also have a full contingent of five board members here.
Which we desperately need, yes. Any other suggestion, counter-suggestion, anything else? Then I guess that's where we're going. So we'll come back to this. It sounds like it, it, we don't have a lot of time left before two of us are leaving, so it's going to have to be probably-- so it's going to have to be probably piecemeal, we're doing this in little pieces, which really, and it really requires, it does require sitting down and just sort of spending some time with it. But I think that's what we're gonna have to do.
I found Mr. Heron's comments very helpful. And, and just have to ask if some of the other candidates for school board have equally suggestive ideas about focus goals. I would, I would, it'd be nice to have you talk at the next meeting, so we could try to include, include those. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Well, it's, I think, I would actually want to invite everybody, but especially anybody who is like, you know, maybe on the board, but anyone in the community, to send suggestions or recommendations to the board. It would be nice if we got them prior to the next meeting, because then we've had a chance to look at them before we come to the meeting and give them some thought and think about how we could bring them into the, the other focus goals that we have. When we're, when we get them right at the meeting time, we'd have to react, respond to them very quickly, and I don't think they get as much consideration as, as they might deserve. So if people do have suggestions or recommendations to send forward, I would really like to encourage you to give them to us in writing before the next meeting.
Good idea. Okay, it's five to seven. We're gonna take a five-minute recess to let the students come in for our presentations, and we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. They have all these face, new faces here. You have an announcement?
Well, we, we do have a translator with us tonight. Would you come up Esperanza? Because I need to have it said in Spanish. Ayuda me, por favor.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas, y esta noche estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes necesita ayuda, me puede encontrar en la parte trasera de esta sala. Gracias.
And we do have headsets for hearing impaired.
Okay, we're on D4. We'll be with you in just a second. We just have a few more items to take care of here. Announcements of closed session under B2. We had a vote. Three, Harder made the motion, Cordero seconded. It was passed, 3-0 with two absences. Noel and Parker were absent. It was to deny the liability claim by Daniel Cano. The other liability claim was not acted on because it was not submitted in a timely fashion. The other item that was voted on was B3, which is the California High School Exit Exam Casey Waiver for Graduation Students with Disabilities. And that was approved with a vote of 3-0, with Harder made the motion, Cordero seconded, and two absences, Noel and Parker. And that was our closed session. Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve, move to accept with appreciation?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes 4-0 with Parker absent. And now, we're on to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognition?
Well, we have a number of outstanding students to introduce to the board tonight. The California Standards Test is administered annually in the spring. All grades are tested in English Language Arts and Math. Students in grades 5, 8, 10 are also tested in Science, and students in grades 8 and 10 are tested in History. There'll be a test on this later. Tonight, we have our top-scoring students in the district. We have them coming up at each grade level. We will read their names. And students, I'd like you to come up. Ms. Swawski, who's our Associate Superintendent for Educational Services, will be giving you a plaque and lining you up here so, so that we can recognize you. Well, last year's second-grade students. Now, they're in third grade this year, but in second grade, they took high honors, they had the highest scores, highest composite scores across the district or at their school. We're Kayden Donahue. Kayden? Or is it Donna Hall?
Donna Hall.
Donna Hall, thank you. From Santa Barbara Charter. From Adams School, Junna Faisal. Is Junna here? Junna's not here. From Santa Barbara Community Academy, Alberto Gil. There he is. And parents, don't be shy. Get up here with your cameras. From Washington School, John Cronin. From Harding School, we have Anthony Luna Velez. Anthony, are you here? Velez. From Washington School, Elena Murphy. Well, these are our students who are in third grade this year who had outstanding second-grade scores. Don't go away. Stand right there, because we're gonna bring up last year's third-grade students now in fourth grade. From Monroe School, Cameron Morris. From Roosevelt School, Emily Peterson. From Peabody Charter, Cameron Sneddon. And Washington School, Chloe Stevens. Last year's top-scoring fourth graders now in fifth grade. From Roosevelt School, Anna Brewer. From Washington School, Connor Buckley. McKinley School, Davina Guzman. Davina, McKinley School. She coming? Oh, good, good, good. Yeah, we're all packed in here tonight, aren't we? From Cleveland School, Jonathan Kim. Jonathan Kim, Cleveland. And from Roosevelt School, Natalie Moore. And last year's fifth-grade students. We have more. Now in sixth grade, Isabella Franco from Washington School. Also from Washington School, Quinn Hensley. From Caesar Chavez Charter School, Andrew Hunter. Andrew Hunter. From Franklin School, Liliana Soto. And from Open Alternative School, Andrew Yang. Well, we're gonna add one more row of last year's sixth-grade students now in seventh grade. They've gone on to junior high, but they did an outstanding job last year in sixth grade. From Washington School, Cornelius Coran. Or maybe that's Curran. Probably. From Roosevelt School, Sienna Okomo. From Peabody Charter School, Timothy Stickles. And from Roosevelt School, John Wager. Well, board members, these are our top scorers from last year at the elementary level. We're gonna have you sit down now, and we'll bring up the students from last year's seventh grade on up through, through high school. And while you're sitting down, listen, because, go ahead, you can, you can go ahead and sit down. Because Saturday night at 5:00, well, let's see, actually, this would be a little bit later, wouldn't it? Because we'll have an early start. Chris, is that right? We'd have an early start, so it would be probably 6:00 on Saturday night. You'll be able to see yourselves on Channel 18 this Saturday night. Well, there it is on the board. Thank you, Dave. Channel 18, Saturday night. Well, let's go on to our secondary students from last year. Last year's seventh-grade students now in eighth grade. From Galita Valley High Junior High, Eugene Cho. And from La Colina Junior High, Brenna Hensley. From La Cumbre Junior High, Helen Yang. Last year's eighth graders now in ninth grade are Vaileun Huen from Galita Valley Junior Vaileun, did I get your name anywhere near correct?
Closer to most.
Let's hear it.
Vaileun.
Vaileun?
Huen.
Huen. Thank you. From Santa Barbara Junior High, Nicholas Marx. There's Nicholas. From La Colina Junior High, David McBride. David McBride. Galita Valley Junior High, Laura Voyen. And La Colina Junior High, Chloe Wariner. Last year's ninth graders now in 10th grade are from Santa Barbara High School, Amanda From Dos Pueblos High School, Patrick Holmes. Dos Pueblos High School, Kevin Voight. Last year's 10th graders now in 11th grade are from Dos Pueblos High School, Ellen Feldman. And Dos Pueblos High School, Helen Yang. I'm sorry, Helen, that is Helen Wang. And finally, last year's 11th graders now seniors, Roxanne Britton from La Cuesta Continuation From San Marcos High School, Mark Scovarodco. I always mispronounce Mark's name. Mark, you're not hiding out just because I mispronounced Scovarodco. And from Dos Pueblos High, Angela Dai. Angela, why don't you come over here for a moment? I'm gonna pause at this point. The board will remember that I introduced Angela and two teammates, Carolyn Kim and John Kim, to you. They returned from last week's International Xingtong Yao High School Mathematics Award Competition in Beijing, where they took second place internationally. The competition was open to high school students of Chinese descent from around the world. They were recognized for their study on invertibility probability of binary matrices. Oh, I know just what that is, Angela. Congratulations to Angela, Caroline, and John. Angela, would you like to tell the board about how much fun this was?
We had a great time in Beijing. It was a lot of fun, meeting with all the other students over there and making friends with them and talking with them, and then speaking with the judges afterwards. And they were pretty well-known mathematicians, so that was a great honor to present and to speak with them. And then, of course, there's the food and sightseeing, which is also all amazing.
Thank you, Angela. Congratulations, all of our students, for their high scores, their hard work. You've, you really have shown this last year, and we'll be looking forward to great things from you in the future. Of course, we all know that your accomplishments are supported by your family. And students, let's all give our family members a big hand. And I see we have a number of teachers and principals in the audience as well. Let's give them a hand. When you leave, I'd like you to go into the courtyard and all the other students that we recognized as well, because we'd like to get a picture of all of you out in the courtyard in just a moment. But before you leave, I believe we have a comment from our board president, Dr. Malikoff.
We are so honored to have you here today, and we're so proud of you all. And we look forward to you coming back year after year. Some of these faces I recognize from previous years. So this is wonderful. We wish you the best of success, and thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you.
Continue with the presentations. I do have one other presentation, and that is to introduce board candidates for the three vacant seats. With us tonight are Annette Cordero. We have Susan Deacon. Ed Heron. Jacqueline Inda. And Charlotte Ware. Board candidate Kate Smith has been disqualified by the Santa Barbara County Elections Office. And that's it for the presentations tonight.
Thank you. Is there a superintendent's report as well?
Yes, there is. The November, November 4 presidential election is generating a lot of academic discussion and debate, of course, in our elementary and secondary schools. Joe Holland, Santa Barbara County Clerk, Recorders, and Assessor, has been visiting schools and talking to students about the election process. I've been very pleased that, you know, Mrs. Harder suggested this a couple of years ago, and Mr. Holland has really done his job. He comes to our students, he comes again to our students in the spring and gets students registered to vote in preparation for the following year. To learn more about the election-related activities on our campuses, I encourage you to visit the news section of our district's website, and that will be up on the board in just a moment. Speaking of the election, two parcel tax measures were put on the November ballot by the Board of Education. Measure H-2000- Measure H-2008 is requesting $27 per parcel, per year, $23 per parcel, per year, for additional science, math, and technology in our junior highs and high schools, additional classes in music and the arts, additional foreign language classes, and smaller 9th grade math classes. Measure I-28 is requesting a similar amount for additional science, math, and technology, and specifically for classroom music for our elementary schools, including charter schools. Parent conferences in the elementary district will take place November 17 through 21st, so that's coming up next month. At the last meeting, I told you about the Franklin Elementary School's newly-formed Community Mariachi Group, made possible because of donations from the Santa Barbara Mariachi Festival Board and the Santa Barbara Bowl Foundation. Casey Kilgore, principal of Franklin School, says the group is now meeting every Tuesday night from 4:00 to 6:00 a.m., and there are 84 students. Did I, 4:00 to 6:00? PM, PM. Sorry. Boy, yeah, or early, early, right? And there are 84 students with 14 public and private elementary and secondary schools. How about that, from 14 different schools? By the way, the program needs donated violins, trumpets, and guitars. If you have an old violin, trumpet, and guitar, we can get it refurbished, so get it to us, please. Our high school marching bands have been doing a stellar job at recent competitions. Now, this is remarkable. San Marcos took first place in the 1A Division at the Summerland Spectacular in Las Vegas on October 18. They also won other category awards. On the same day, Dos Pueblos won sweepstakes at the 2A Division at the Royal High School Classic. The Dos Pueblos, Dos Pueblos High School Jazz Band performed at Jubilee by the Sea Jazz Festival in Pismo Beach on October 25th, and were the only high school band to be invited to this all-professional event. I'd like to comment also on the board brief. My office regularly issues a board brief, which is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area, or it can be available through my office. I'd like to highlight just one item. The board saw that we had a significant amount of information on demographic information, on students who are participating in a number of career technical pathways, academies. Well, we have some wonderful performances coming up in the weeks ahead. Dos Pueblos High School will present Friedrich Duran Matz, excuse me, Duran Matz, The Visit, on November 15, 20, 21st, and 22nd. San Marcos High School will present The Comedy of Errors on November 13, 14, 15. Santa Barbara Junior High's fall play will be Inherit the Wind on November 21st and 22nd. And Galita Junior High's Performing Arts Class will present Got Broadway on November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And that ends the superintendent's report.
We have a comment on the superintendent's report.
The superintendent's report is an important part of transparency in the Santa Barbara School District. In written and verbal form, Brian Sarvis communicates information to educate, substantiate, and clarify his agenda. Because there are always two sides to a pancake, it is an important time for the public to rise to the podium and inform the board of any errors, omissions, and corrections in the superintendent's report that would obfuscate the truth. Anything but the truth is illegal, unethical, uncivil, and immoral. I vowed in my candidacy statement to expose corruption, and I have. I would like to submit to the board that in 1998, I just said, he talked about that I was disqualified, and he neglected to mention, I just said that it is a time to talk about what is not said. Any errors, omissions, and corrections to the board, from the public, is important to hear. One thing he omitted was that Open Alternative School is having a Candidates Forum tomorrow, Wednesday, October 29th, at their campus at La Colina Junior High, 1 o'clock. Okay, then I will talk about the fact that the board brief mentioned, a report from Davis Hayden. Regarding the Santa Barbara Charter School, it was in the board brief. An important component of the Charter School is incredibly unique to any school in the country, the home-based school partnership program, also known as the homeschoolers. Several district schools have sprung from this model. Full ADA is collected for each child or student in the program, with enormous benefit to the school district in that there are no district facilities or even personnel needs, as they are taught off-campus by their parents. They are a school without walls. For those involved, it is the school of our dreams. Charter School teachers provide curriculum, and the campus is available for socializing, and otherwise, the rest of the world is theirs.
30 seconds.
It will pain you to know, I'm sure, to learn that the school director, paid by the Santa Barbara School District, whose son was a homeschooler with Wendy Kanter for 12 years, is Carol Dossi. Carol Dossi lives at 3400 Gibraltar Road. She now has a home school, private high school, Gibraltar High. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'd like to caution you, Ms. Smith, that some of your points were not, some of your comments were not on this agenda item, so just, I know you have a number of questions.
Excuse me, the board brief, it talked about Charter School and about the target growth, a component of the growth.
Public comments. Who do we have for public comment?
Well, good evening. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Tim Mahoney, Southern California Gas Company. And with me is the proud members of the Santa Barbara High Don's Net Cafe.
I'd love it if they came over, if they lined up on the other side, because then the camera will capture them really well.
Very good. And very enthusiastic and very excited to be here, and welcome, members of the audience and all. We're here today on the gas company's behalf to present a $5,000 donation to the Don's Net Cafe. I'd like the students to tell what all this is going to do, and just briefly let you know that from the gas company's side of the world, we're always interested in education as you are, workforce readiness. I first learned about this class a couple of years back, and I walked in there, and I got so excited, because the students were so excited. They are learning everything possible in the realm of education, business, marketing, all the things which are going to make successful entrepreneurs in the past, and these are student entrepreneurs. So we wanted to come tonight. Hopefully, this will be an encouragement for other folks to step up and support programs like this. So real happy to be here. We've got the check here, and I'd just like the other students to say a few words here.
We are very honored today to accept this check on behalf of Santa Barbara High School's student-run social entrepreneurship business, the Don's Net Cafe, and all of our business partners throughout the community, we would like to thank for all of their help in pushing us towards the right direction, for ethical, for the ethical good of the Santa Barbara community. But for this check, I would like to pass it to the department, who is going to use the funds, which includes a sublimation printer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Crispini Barra. I am the VP of Customer Station. Unfortunately, Chris Garcia, VP of Sublimation, was, wasn't able to come to this event today because he was taking care of his puppy. First, I want to start off by thanking you guys for the big check. And with the check, we will be, sorry, we'll be providing it to help us run the business properly and to achieve our goal by buying our new sublimation printer. We are tremendously appreciated by the donation, and with the remaining money, we will be purchasing water bottles, but not just ordinary water bottles, reusable water bottles. If everyone had these bottles, it would benefit the world. For example, global warming, there will be fewer bottles thrown away, and more bottles will be saved. Once again, we would like to thank you for this big donation. And our research and design, our custom products, we customize t-shirts, mouse pads, ties, pretty much anything, you name it, we make it. Feel free to stop by Room 22.
And I don't know if your teacher, Ms. Nodel, would like to come up? No? But we would certainly like to recognize you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Hi. I'm Shereen Catipush, and I'm the Director of the Youth Services System for the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. And as the board knows, you help support our youth service specialist staff on each of the secondary campuses, so I just wanted to come tonight for just a minute or two. I've given you each a Red Ribbon Week summary. I wanted to thank you and the schools for your tremendous support. Our YSSs on the campuses last week did a great job. Kids had the opportunity to sign pledges to be alcohol and drug-free. They got wristbands. There were activities at lunch and after school. They're detailed here for you, and I have some great pictures. I made a slideshow, but I didn't realize I couldn't show it during public comments. I'll have to come back and show it to you. They did some great things on the campuses. Kids got really creative and kind of competitive. They had door decorating contests, and pumpkin carving contests, and all kinds of things. There were bulletin announcements, and facts and information about alcohol and other drugs. So it was a great week of fun for the students. They learned a lot about alcohol and other drug prevention, and they were really well-supported by you and by the school staff. So thanks for a wonderful Red Ribbon Week.
Jean White, followed by Irene Segal. Am I getting that right? I'm sorry, Sale. And followed by Mike Conroy.
Hi, my name is Jean White. I'm a marriage and family therapist, and I have a company called Center for Developmental Play and Learning, which serves children with autism aged 3 through 12. But I'm coming here tonight as a parent. What I thought was sort of a family drama, if you will, unfolding in my house with my special-needs son, who's in 4th grade, I find is part of a trend, a disturbing trend. Because of my professional work, I'm aware that what's happening in terms of lack of support for my son, who we were set to continue, a special education aide to continue with his successful academic progress at Open Alternative, was not in place, and by Week 9, his teacher came to me very concerned. And so there's a, there's a personal toll that that takes on our family, but I've come tonight to speak to you because, of course, I'm aware through my work and through my friends at Open Alternative that I don't, that I'm not alone. And I'm very disturbed about this trend, that support that had been written into IEPs could be removed on technicalities, causing a lot of hard-won gains, not just in academic progress, but in self-confidence, to be undermined. And I've seen the drama unfold with my son, who has autism, and it's very painful, but certainly that could be a matter just for myself and my educational team and the district. But I wanted to bring to your attention that I think it's part of a larger trend, and I hope you'll hear all our chorus of voices together and think about the direction of the Special Education Department at this point in time.
Irene Sale, followed by Mike Conroy.
First of all, thank you all for coming out tonight and to listen to our concerns. I'm a parent also. I have worked with children as a professional and in a volunteer capacity as well. And I too am upset by what has happened at our school, Open Alternative School. And I can see right above the mission statement is, "The Santa Barbara School District's in partnership with parents in the community," but it hasn't felt like a partnership this year. And I don't want to lay the blame at anyone's feet. I assume that some of it's just confusion, but I will read something, because I'm aware of time, that there seems to be some confusion as to what constitutes a valid individual education plan or IEP. Parents and teachers should not need a legal degree to interpret the special education jargon that lets them know if their child is going to receive the necessary help to be successful in an academic setting. What is the point of making a plan and signing an agreement if the school district has no intention of honoring the IEP? If the intent of the IEP is clear, but the language is not, then the school district should meet with the school in a good-faith effort to clarify the plan. Instead, the school district has used what amounts to a legal loophole as an excuse to cease providing help for a wide variety of children in the Santa Barbara Elementary School District. There was no effort to contact parents and educators before these changes were made, which is unconscionable. The elementary school's dedicated teachers have been left scrambling to make the classrooms work for all their students without adequate help. Now, I don't know why this has come about, but you are all competent and wonderful and dedicated people who have chosen this work for more than just a profession, so please see if you can remedy this. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, members of the school district, this is Mike Conroy. I'm here for my son, Joshua, whose aide is missing. I could play a message from you I received from Anissa McNeil from last October 15th, Wednesday, that says that aide should be there, but he is not. His aide was pulled on Monday, September 9th, with no prior notification, left him in the lurch, and left him and our whole family, actually, suffering. At the IEP we had, impromptu IEP we had on Wednesday, October 15th, a district representative showed up and said that we could, in the interim, hire, the special ed would pay for a substitute teacher to help fill that gap. And that has been two weeks as of tomorrow. I confirmed with Nitin, who is the head co-teacher principal at OAS, I'm not sure what the professional term is. There have been phone calls and emails made to find a substitute, and those have not been returned from the district. Our IEP was originally signed May 27th of '08 with some odd terminology. I started calling Ms. Anissa McNeil June of this year. We played phone tag all summer. As school started, we played phone tags some more, and I heard rumblings about what was going on in the district. I finally left her a message and said, "As long as my son's aide is not going to be pulled, then you don't need to call me back." And I didn't hear anything from her. And then after five weeks of school, his aide was pulled, as I say, without any prior notification, leaving him and his entire classroom in the lurch. And I'm trying to find out if there's anyone responsible here. Everyone knows he needs an aide, or a substitute teacher, or someone in there. We have it in print, we have it in black and white. We have it in print, we have it in black and white, we have it on a telephone recording. Who do I speak to to ensure that the district carries out its job?
We'll be in touch with you.
When?
Ms. Swawski will call you tomorrow.
Okay.
And if you do not talk with her, I will talk with you.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Conroy, you wrote a telephone number on this slip. Is that the number that's best?
That would be perfect.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Kate Smith, followed by Corey Bream.
It's horrifying to find that on your focus goals, it says that you will implement federal procedural safeguards, provide effective behavioral intervention, and appropriate modifications and accommodations to improve student achievement. Special education is a school district governed by contracts that are so tight and deep that it is only through a lawyer that a complaint can be filed. For 20 years, there were no special education lawyers, only on the district's sides, and there was no complaint where a parent prevailed. With Emily Rose Smith versus Santa Barbara School District, the nation's most complex, most expensive, and the most pathetic case in the history of the United States, things have changed. I will have you know that these complaints from parents who have contracts where they say personnel are missing, they should go to Michael Gonzalez, get a Williams complaint form, and file with the state through the very simple Williams complaint form that he never talks about, that there are missing teachers. That is the way regular education parents may call the school to account. I don't have time to write, to read the letter, but I have a letter to the grand jury. One month before I filed a successful candidacy for school board, even though you knew I was out of the district, you wrote a letter saying I was in. You knew that the house was 100 yards beyond the line, but you said I was in, and for 12 years, you have contracted with me to educate my child. You have called that contract null and void, and there will be consequences. To the grand jury, "The Santa Barbara School District warrants an investigation for violations of state and federal laws, failure to maintain a grievance procedure and an evaluation process, collusion with other government agencies to intimidate and retaliate against whistleblowers, and mismanagement of state and federal funds." I list eight people to talk to. My daughter is the victim of educational neglect and physical and emotional abuse. I filed a letter of complaint with Diana Rigby, the Director of Student Services, and the superintendent.
Thirty seconds.
There was no response as required by law. And then I list eight more people to talk to. I filed a letter of complaint with the school board and the Assistant Superintendent, asking to discuss the problems with the teacher, the principal, and the administrators, and to deal with the most disturbing issue, the lack of a grievance procedure. Their response was an attack on my family that has cost almost, well, 10 years ago, it was only $100,000. It went up to 1.55 million.
That's time, Ms. Smith. Thank you so much.
I will submit the rest in writing.
Thank you. Corey Bream, followed by Nadia Holstein?
Good evening. I was here two weeks ago. If you don't remember, my son is Jake Bream at Washington. We're having issues, just like the other parents here, so I want you to know that you're not alone. In last meeting, there were three or four mothers that stood up and commented on the lack of aides and the unprofessional behavior by certain people in the district. I have to commend Ms. Swawski. You did follow through and get me an aide, so hopefully you do speak with her. That's not why I'm here. I'm here because, again, special ed needs revamping. I know that you guys have your, what's it called when you put all the money together and you submit it? Help me. What is it? The budget, yes. So I want to include special ed instructional aides get a raise. I did a study on this, and I'm very active now because I'm kind of appalled at what's occurred, and it stimulates or motivates me. So here's my motivation. Santa Barbara School District, or Santa Barbara in general, is a higher cost of living than anywhere, pretty much, across California when you do the study. Our aides are paid less. So I did a study on what they're paid, and they're roughly paid $1.50 an hour, less than the closest one. And if you average the numbers, dropping the highest and the lowest, of course, to figure out an appropriate average, you come out to a little bit more than $2.00 an hour pay raise needed to meet the industry standard for this position. So not only are we higher by 20% than the nearest location, which is Galita, by the way, everything else was more than 20% higher cost of living, yet we're underpaying our special ed instructional aides, whatever title you wish to give them, many people use both interchangeably. So I just want to say they need a raise, and I want it on your budget. That's my goal. So if you flip the page, you can see there are approximately 150 aides, based on Maria's comment, who happens to be Anissa McNeil's assistant. Roughly 150 aides, if you give them a $1.00 raise or a $1.50 raise, would at least bring them up to equal to the lowest person in other areas nearby. Do you see that? Is it legible? Can you understand what I wrote? That's all I care about. For the public, you don't have a handout, but roughly, we pay anywhere from $14.00 to $17.00 an hour. They work approximately 990 hours. They don't get benefits because they're part-time. They effectively earn about $13,000 to $14,000 a year to be our aide, and that's, I think, why we're losing so many of them. And so many of them are tired. They have to work a second job to maintain an average living. By the time they pay rent in this area and food, they're out of money. No car payment, no gas money, no nothing. So many do work second jobs, they're exhausted, and they're dealing with our special ed kids. So it just seems fair and equitable to at least give them a minimum raise so they match other people within the industry standard. But then if you did by chance think of how much more expensive it is to live here, perhaps you could even do more than that. But I did give you the exact total for your budget, so you don't even have to think. Thank you.
Nadia is... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I brought my daughter because of baby sitting issues. The call away, she said she might want to pick up with her son. She gets part of like three minutes. This is my daughter being called back.
You look like John McCain.
I'm going to stop you because it won't be, it won't, the audio portion won't make the video if you're not on the microphone, unfortunately.
I didn't intend to be on a video or anything else. I have never been to a board meeting, and I've never wanted to be at one. My parents were both teachers, and I would characterize myself as a rather easygoing parent who believes in working at the level of the problem with the people, maybe, who you see as causing the problem. I don't believe in suing at all on principle, and I find it regrettable that that happens in special ed because I think it hurts the program. And I wanted to say that until this year, or until what seems to me our new director came on board of special ed, I've been very pleased with what we've been able to do with special ed. It's not perfect, and it has two failings that you really have to work with, but if you work with the teachers, the specialists, Aze has a vision specialist, she has a physical therapist, you can put something together that really can help the child. Two years ago, Aze was not reading or writing. We got her a CCTV for her materials to be enlarged. We got enlarged materials. She is reading at sixth grade level now, and she can write. I don't think a parent can just sit back and say, "Educate my child," especially not if you have a special needs child. It has to be teamwork, and the parent has to take a large role, I think, in making sure that the communication keeps happening and that people really know the medical conditions, what's possible to work with, what needs to be done for the whole child. And a couple of years ago, I was very, and I had to learn this, distressed to realize that my child was just being babysat with all her potential. She had not learned to write, and reading was a problem of not having enlarged materials and tracking and a whole, a very complicated problem, that we had to train the aides how to help her so she could really learn to read. I'm digressing a little bit, but I just want to let you know that I am a person who's very willing to work. And after...
Thirty seconds.
Oh, boy. I am here because I'm very distressed about what's happening in special education. I think these kinds of efforts are being undermined. The rug has been pulled out from under my daughter as well. She's supposed to have a full-time aide. First, the head teacher was yanked with no warning, no communication. Two weeks into the term, her aide was yanked that she was very fond of, no time to even say goodbye. Couple of weeks later, her second aide was yanked. Okay, no warning. She does not have a full-time aide at this point, which means she misses math classes and she sits during phys ed, which we have a whole program worked out for her, and she watches children play basketball. So there's a problem. I have a letter that describes it, and I would be very gratified if you would read the letter at your own time. So if I may pass it out, or maybe Aze will, I would very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Yolanda Monari.
And maybe already some people know me, because I've been asking for help for my son. He is now 19. He didn't graduate. I've been asking for help for three years. And finally, I got last week a letter from the lawyer of the district that my case is closed. So now what? My son didn't graduate, and I've been asking for help for three years. He was doing the fifth year in Santa Barbara High School, and the first thing that Mr. Capriro told me was, he's already over 18, what he's doing here. And I don't know what people want to do with people with special ed. We need help for our children. But now I'm here for my son, and I want someone to open his case and read it and see how they can help him. Because I just got a letter from the lawyer that the case is closed, and that's it. So I need a lawyer, or what? Carolyn Renaud and Ms. Posero, they were my advocates, and they're not here. But the thing is that, to who I have to ask for help? My son is depressed. He didn't graduate. He paid for his child to go to the ceremony and everything, and now he's very depressed. Because, you know, as every child, they have dreams beside mine and my family. So I want someone to open his case. His name is Philip Monares. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
We're moving on to the consent agenda.
I want to make some comments on this. After you, Mrs. Sarvis.
No, 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 go ahead.
This is the second week that we've had people come down here to explain things and bring problems to us that really should be handled at a much lower level at a much earlier time. And it's just unacceptable that this is happening, Dr. Sarvis, and I know you can do something about it, and I'm sure you will, and it must be done decisively and soon.
My comment was not about public comment. It was, as we move on to the consent agenda, I just wanted to note that we have public speakers on consent items.
So I imagine those items need to be pulled, yeah? Could you tell me which items they are?
I want to pull E2, please.
And these items are E2, E4, E5, and E19.
Anything else? Nope? Then do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the remainder of the agenda.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I note that there are people here for E2. We usually hold these things to the end. Does the Board have an opinion about whether we should do this now or at the end?
Well, I think we need to take public comment now, or we're effectively closing it off. So we can take public comment and then vote on the items later if you choose.
Okay. At least on E2. Because I see that...
E2 is Kate Smith.
Was there anybody else for comment? The question wasn't so much for the public comment, it was that there were people in the audience who were here to hear if, why we pulled it off, or what we're doing with it, or whatever. So I'm wondering whether we couldn't just have the discussion right now, or whether we should just wait till the end, and make all these people come back.
It doesn't make any difference.
Mine with me.
It's fine with you, it's fine with you. Then we'll go ahead.
E2, Kate Smith.
What is E2?
E2 is...
Charter school?
Why don't you come up to the microphone?
It's the charter school.
It's the charter school.
Santa Barbara Charter School.
Right.
I already talked about it.
Okay. Dr. Noel, you?
You pulled it.
Are we going to vote on it now?
Well, yes.
Is this a discussion and vote?
Yes, yes, if we could do that now, because we have...
Santa Barbara Charter School is the school of our dreams. It is child-centered, teacher-directed, and parent-involved. It is parents and children learning and growing together, hands-on, experiential curriculum methodologies that you never even, that you don't know about. The children learn to coordinate, communicate, cooperate, and collaborate. They learn how to resolve problems. They learn how to resolve conflict. They learn how to grow up to be healthy, happy, and successful people in our democratic society. And if our schools cannot do that for all of the children, we are doomed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Noel, was there some reason you want to...
Were there more public speakers?
No, not on that.
I'm going to vote against this MOU and the renewal of this charter, and I'm voting against it for the same reason I voted against it last time. Contrary to the last speaker's comments, Santa Barbara Charter School, by any measure that we use in public education, is one of the lowest-performing schools in the state of California. That it, when you look at the 100 similar schools that schools are compared to by the State Department of Education, Santa Barbara Charter School is in the first category. First is the lowest. If you then open the file and look where they are in the first category, they're at the absolute bottom, and they have been there for six years, six years. And we have a board policy that we were just talking about, a focus goal, I should say, that holds out the expectation that all of our schools will achieve a similar schools' rating of eight or higher. That means they're in the top 20% of the 100 similar schools, similarity in terms of demographics and a number of other school characteristics. Santa Barbara Charter School has failed to meet that year after year after year after year. In my opinion, it is an embarrassment to the district, and it is an example of why charter schools have gotten a bad reputation in public education. Thank you, Madam.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
No.
It passes three with one opposed. It passes three with one opposing, one absent. The absent is Parker. We're going to move on. We will come back to E4 and E5 at the end of the meeting.
We have public comment on E4, E5, and E19.
And E19 as well. We can do that at the end, though.
If we do it at the end, we have, I think, effectively cut off public comment. I, okay.
That's okay, you can do it at the end, I don't want it.
Is, is this the only public comment person?
No, 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 there are several other people.
If, if other people wanted to speak about it, that's fine.
But they'll probably be here, too.
Just me and them.
Go ahead.
Since we usually do. The action agenda. We're on F1, approval of changes to the board bylaws regarding public participation and conduct at board meetings. This was requested by Dr. Noel. And I put in a attachment. F1.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm unclear why we aren't taking the other items that have public speakers on the consent agenda?
Well, we usually take the consent agenda items at the end, and I just took one of them. I chose to do that. We don't, I have to do them all, we can do them-
It was because there was a large contingent from Santa Barbara Charter in the room.
Yeah, even though they weren't interested in having comments, they were here to hear our discussion.
Well-
Would you like to hear the other three things earlier? I'm happy to take that request.
I feel that it's probably only fair to the other people who are here for those items, too, to treat them as we did the first group.
Okay.
Okay, item, item E4, Kate Smith.
What is E4?
Approval of Just Communities, Talking in Class, Leadership Training for La Cuesta.
It's vitally important that our children learn how to communicate, how to express themselves, not only verbally. Hello? You know, it's really not possible to listen to me and talk to each other at the same time.
Please stay on topic.
Well, I am. I was speaking, but what is the point of my speaking to-
Please stay on topic.
Well, then, please grant me a modicum of decorum and courtesy and listen. What is the point?
Thank you.
Item E5, Kate Smith.
Oh, wait a minute, you want to vote on E4? Let's do that. No, okay.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes four with one absence.
Item E5, Kate Smith.
Drumming is one of the ancient arts. It is music. And there is a correlation between music and math and brain development. It was wonderful to see Azie, who you just saw, walk to you. And it's wonderful to watch the children who are paraplegics and quadriplegics in my daughter's class drumming. And as little Emily Baron puts her hands out to drum, she is doing incredible work for motor skills and improvement. She's strengthening her body. There are several groups in town that have dozens of drums and methodologies to get all of our kids drumming. Drumming is an art that can be used everywhere, from campfires to, well, it goes up to symphonies. And I hope that you will bring more drumming into our schools, along with other programs that will engage the children in activities that they can use for their lifetime. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
They still, they still have one on the public comment. I assume this is E5 and not F5. Rich Foster? Is it E5? F, thank you, okay. Then, go ahead.
Move to approve?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four with one absence.
And then, public comment on E19.
I presume it's me, Ed Heron, on E19?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This one came to my attention because, as I talk to people in this process, the topic of restrooms at Adam's School came up pretty dramatically and pretty forcefully. My only question on this is one sentence that says, "And the new date of substantial completion is September 27th, 2008." Does that refer to the $1,876.80 or to the $229,991,063.00 contract? And is there a legal terminology or legal, legal aspect to that statement of substantial compliance or completion?
We can contact Mr. Heron tomorrow.
Okay.
My, my, my comment is that it says September 27th. That's a month ago. And the restroom's still not open. Our children are still using porta-potties. Vision a kindergarten student pushing a button with his foot, pushing a button with his hand, getting water. It's absolutely, in terms of many, many people, the use of porta-potties by elementary school kids is disgusting. That's not my word, that's what our voters are telling me. So, I think it's something that, to go on 10 weeks, they're still being using porta-potties, needs to be looked at very seriously.
Would the board like the comment from Mr. Hetjung?
Yeah, Mr. Hetjung's prepared to comment, sure.
Dr. Sarves, members of the board, the change order itself is not really to do with the restrooms, but we had a contractor on site in the immediate area who could remedy the situation. As far as the portable restrooms, they did open today. There were numerous problems with this project, numerous delays. The, the last delay was with some equipment that didn't work. The previous delay was with the handrails. The handrails did not meet the ADA or Title 24 codes as outlined in the plans and specifications. To open those restrooms with non-compliant handrails and have somebody get hurt would have opened this district to a great deal of liability. Therefore, we do not open projects until they are complete and compliant with code and, and approved by the DSA inspector as being compliant with the code. Unfortunately, the only alternative was to provide portable restrooms. The substantial completion date of this project is for the total amount of the restroom contract. The change order added days to, to the substantial completion date. Substantial completion date is not the same as the date that we occupy. The difference is what we use as leverage for liquidated damages, for actual costs, for, for what the district incurred as actual expenses, so we can take those out of the contract rather than paying them out of other funds. The contractor would pay those, for those portable restrooms to be on site, and any other things that we had to pay for due to the delay. However, they can't be used for punitive damages.
Thanks, Mr. Hetjung. I know porta, porta-potties always raise issues when there's construction on campuses. Nobody likes using them, but I'll move to approve this contract.
But they did open today.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes four, zero with one absent. Sorry, four with one absent. Okay, now we can move on. We are done with the consent agenda. We're going to move on to F1. Dr. Noel suggested I put this on, on the agenda, and I just wrote out some options, but I'll let you, you speak to it, Dr. Noel.
I'm sorry, before, before we move into the side, can I just make a quick comment?
Please, sir.
Because we're, one of the things that has continued to happen is that we get behind on our agenda, and we end up having to bump items off the agenda, and we, I think we have some important items at the end. I'm just wondering if the board members would be willing to try to adhere to the time limits that we have identified on the agenda?
And I'll, and I'll enforce it.
I don't mean, I don't mean the actual date, but I mean the number of minutes, I mean the actual time, but I mean the number of minutes that we have allotted.
I will try to.
Thank you.
Push this along.
Yes, but I, I, I'm fully sympathetic with that, Mrs. Cordaro, but it raises the question of maybe, maybe staff, or the president, rather, and the superintendent misestimated how much time it will take to have a meaningful and thorough deliberation of a topic, and could certainly want some flexibility.
Maybe we could take, take the time allotted, and then if we need more, we can carry it over to another agenda.
Okay, can we, we'll keep moving. Dr. Noel, was there anything you wanted to add to my memo here?
Well, I, I would like to, you list four points, four possibilities, but I would like very much to hear legal counsel's opinion on those points, as, as well as on the general issue.
Thank you.
We do have Craig Price with us.
I saw. And I asked. Let me just pose the question. Do I understand that the topic that you are interested in discussing is how to deal with members of the public who insist on going on at length and giving what may be considered to be irrelevant comments, repetitive comments, making comments on virtually every item? And how does one deal with that at the same time that you are wanting to accommodate important comments from other members of the public, as well as comply with the Brown Act? I just want to make sure that I'm on topic. Is that what you're asking, Dr. Noel?
Among other things.
Obviously, the policy that you now have is adapted from the California School Board Association policy, and it takes into account various legal cases that have come up through the years. That includes, for example, the Chafee decision in which a court of appeal held, this is fairly recent, that it was entirely reasonable for the board chair, in that particular case, to exercise discretion and to limit public comment below or beyond that which is normally allowed. So, for example, in that case, members of the public were told that there would only be two minutes instead of the allotted three minutes. And as in your policy, it stated that normally three minutes are allowed. The case stands for a lot more than that, though. It, combined with other cases, stands for the proposition that the board, and in particular the board chair, has a variety of different tools which she can utilize in an effort to reasonably and legally control comments that unfairly take up the time of other interested members of the public who are attending meetings, as well as district staff, as well as the viewing audience at home. Some of those tools, in addition to just reducing the number of minutes from three, for example, to two or one and a half. The most draconian, quite frankly, of all of them, that I think we talked about a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, that your board is loathe to use, but nevertheless, you should know it's there, is to have all of the public comment at the front of the agenda, meaning at the place where you normally take public comment on non-agenda items. Because the Brown Act says that public comments need to be taken before or during matters. You have the option, if you wish, to have all of the comments come at the same point early in the meeting, to put a limitation on the amount of time for those comments, and to put the usual limitation on the amount of time that any particular individual has. That is entirely legitimate. It's unfortunate. That is a process that's used by many smaller agencies, agencies that don't have the level of interest that bring people out, such as you typically do for your meetings. So, it is unfortunate when one has to go to that length in order to curb someone's appetite for infringing on the rights of so many people in the community. But that is one option that you can do. You also have the option, if you want to use that as a tool, in effect, to rewrite your policy so that at any given time, even though it's not going to be the normal procedure, you can say, "All right, that's it. Tonight, we are going to deviate from our usual procedure, and we're going to take all comments on all items at the outset of this meeting." You have that option if you amend your policy to so state. You can, of course, limit the number of minutes of comment on any topic. You can change the order of speaker slips. You can, of course, as, as-
What would that be, changing the order of speaker slips?
Well, you don't have any policy that requires that speakers be heard in the order that they turn in their slips. Typically, that may be what happens, or it may not be. But, for example, if you have somebody that determines that they want to speak on virtually every subject and thereby interfere with the rights of other people who have a keen interest in bringing their matters before the board, and interfere with the orderly progress of business, when you take those speaker slips, that repetitive person can be put at the bottom. So that, let's just say, on a, a topic of some interest, if you limit public comment to a total of a half hour, I'm, this is just a hypothetical, on some particular subject, and you go through the commenters and you run out of time, then it's perfectly legitimate if you don't get to your filibuster speaker, basically, or commenter. That's another tool that you can use. So, you know, not unlike rules that you find in the United States Congress for dealing with issues. I mean, you're talking not just about Robert's rules, but all sorts of procedural rules they have. You have a number of tools at your disposal that allows you to put, first, the interest in the public, in being able to be here and participate in the district's business, as well as the interest of your staff and yourselves, and getting the business through and completed during a timeframe that interested members of the public can actually stay and participate. So, you do have those tools. You also, of course, have tools for dealing with people who are disruptive, meaning that they can be called out of order, meaning that their commenting privileges can be terminated, and they can be told that your comment is over. You are out of order, you've refused to comply with my directive to come back into order, and your comment is now concluded. Please move aside. There are those kinds of things that can be done. You, and I know you have done this, and a number of other agencies do it, and it typically works. You can call for a recess, because sometimes people's emotions run, and there gets to be a momentum, and by having a recess and having the microphones be off until somebody or another cools off, that can have the effect of restoring order. And hopefully, at that time, the person who is taking advantage of the opportunity that is given them to the detriment of other members of the public will hopefully see the error of their ways and step aside and allow the public's business to continue in a unselfish way. But if that doesn't, and if you've tried some of these different steps, then, of course, someone can be asked to leave the room, and law enforcement can be called, and these are typically only in extraordinary circumstances. And I know that your board has been and is loathe to go to that length. But yet, when I see these situations all around the state and all around the country, and I read articles, you're not alone in dealing with, you know, very troubling issues of wanting to accommodate the broad public but having to put up with people that are taking advantage to the detriment of the interest of the public. I've talked to Assistant Attorney General about this, and I've been told, and I, I think you've tried this on various occasions, that if at all possible, please, before you go to the length- that if at all possible, please, before you go to the length, for example, of dumping all public comment at the beginning of the meeting, explain to the person who is interfering with the rest of the public's rights. Explain to that person that it's not just about some particular board member or some particular administrator, but that the impact of what the person is doing is really affecting the rights of the public. So that that person can understand that they're punishing, in effect, the wrong person or the wrong group through their antics. Sometimes that can work in a calm, you know, dispassion meeting with a particular member of the public. Sometimes it can't. But I've gone on long enough. Those are examples of the types of things that are permissible and that are used in other agencies.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, if I may. Number two on the list, Dr. Malacoc, that the board could limit the number of times-- Times, said the board could limit the number of times a single speaker could speak.
Is that a, is that a possible, I just made these things up, so--
I thought you, I thought you were--
No, I just made them up, and I realized--
The legal oracle here.
No, I didn't have any idea. I thought I, you know, just ideas that I had, so I thought that--
I don't believe that that is, would be appropriate under ordinary circumstances. If you're going to allow members generally of the public to comment on different agenda items, then unless someone becomes disruptive or abusive, you can't really ban a particular individual from speaking. That is the difficulty, because in order to take, in order to affect some of these remedies that I was talking about, it really requires, in effect, punishing everyone.
The same argument would hold, then, to the suggestion that the change of, from three to minutes to two minutes, be selectively applied. That'd be inappropriate, too, I would assume.
Yes, it would.
Having--
Ken, oh.
Go ahead.
Just going to ask a quick question. If a speaker has violated the policies and has refused to adhere to what the president is requesting in terms of keeping on the, on the agenda item, keeping their comments to their appropriate time limit, et cetera, at that point in a meeting, could we refuse to allow this person to continue to speak on future agenda items for that particular meeting? Or, or not?
I think that in order to do so, the, the issue would have to rise to a level of substantial disruption. I don't think that you could do that willy-nilly.
Okay. Ms. Carter.
No, I, thank you, Mr. Price, I appreciate you laying out options for us. Where, from, from where I sit, having reviewed the board bylaws on, on meeting conduct, I feel as if we're not taking full advantage of the existing rules. And that were we to review these more frequently, you know, and enforce them on a regular and consistent basis, that we wouldn't have to have further discussion. So, that's, that's where I stand. Let's enforce what we have.
And I think just through, you know, continual monitoring of the situation, you can be stricter without inhibiting one iota, the interest of the public in, in commenting. For example, if somebody gets up and says, "Now, what's this item?" before they comment, there's no need why you have to explain to a member of the public what the item is so that they can think about what they're going to say. It's over, if you wish to go in that direction. So, I think the president always can remind a commenter that the reason for imposing limitations or wanting to impose limitations is for the benefit of all the other people that are in the room or that are watching, and that it can be viewed as very, very selfish to insist on hogging so much time and being repetitive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, please, don't sit down.
Yeah, please, go, go.
What guidance can you give in the area of wandering off point, but sort of being close to point? Or wandering off and then coming back, and then wandering off and coming back? And it may have to do with whether, like, if it's an action item, is, would the speech be restricted to being relevant to the action that's before the board? That would be a little different in a conference item, presumably. Could you?
Well, I think that, that the only real answer to what you're raising is by having an active presiding officer of the board who is going to insist on keeping the commenters on topic. I mean, I just, as an example, if somebody, you have, let's just say hypothetically, that the superintendent gives a report on items A, B, and C, about some things that are going on in the district. Well, I suppose that a commenter has the right to get up and say, "You know, on item A, you gave the wrong date, and I want to correct that." Or to fill in some further blanks. But when the commenter gets up and says, "I want to talk about some other activities that are E, F, and G," that's off point. That has nothing to do with those items. And the direction of the presiding officer can continue to be brought back to what the actual topic is and to keep, or to attempt to keep the person from veering off. Hopefully, getting the cooperation of the person so that they can see that they're not making themselves any friends in the community in terms of the disruption that they're causing and the delay that they're causing in terms of all the other people that have an interest in either speaking or having their item be heard. But, of course, that's not always the case. So, it really just boils down to having a presiding officer that has to, in effect, work overtime. It's almost like a judge that's sitting there hearing objections, except without objections being made. You have to rule on whether or not the person is wandering from the topic.
And, and if a, if a chairperson tends to be a overly strict constructionist, what would be the consequences?
Overly strict constructionist in terms of being overly disciplined, you mean, and--
Yeah, how far may you wander?
There's no real delineation of that beyond the rule of reason. I think that the ultimate test in any case is if you were challenged in a court of law, I mean, what would be the rule that would apply? And the rule that would apply would be whether or not the board, in curtailing the speechifying of the commenter, acted arbitrarily and abused the board's discretion. And what that means is that there is a considerable amount of deference that is given to you as an elected public body to exercise that discretion.
And would the kind of totality of circumstance, something like that, be taken into account?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. Your comments have been very helpful.
Yes, they have been. Ms. Cordero.
I, I have a quick comment, which is to agree with Ms. Harder, that I think if we more consistently enforced the rules that we already have, it might help address some of these without having to do a great deal more. But I also want to clarify a question, because in our policy, the question that I asked you earlier about curtailing speech during a meeting, in our policy, we say, "Should an occasion arise when there is persistent disruption by an individual who disregards the board president's procedural rulings, the speaker may be denied further opportunity to address the board at that meeting." Are we, are we in the position to enforce that part of our policy?
If you have a speaker who is refusing to curtail their comments at the allotted time, they've been told, "Your three minutes are up, they keep speaking." "Your three minutes are up, they keep speaking." The next item, "Your three minutes are up, and they keep speaking." To the point where there is a genuine disruption of the meeting that's going on, then I believe that, that is something which you could do, consistent with your policy. Certainly, your policy gives you that leeway, and I would see, under circumstances such as I have described, that to do so would not be viewed by any reviewing body as being arbitrary or unreasonable. It would be something that would be calculated not to fulfill, you know, any selfish desires on the part of the board, not to hear something that had to do with some malfeasance in office, but rather, it had to do with the conduct of the meeting and the fact that the person was disrupting the public's flow of business. So, the answer would be yes, in those kind of circumstances. By the same token, I think that is a remedy that needs to be thought out before it's employed, and it can't be used in all circumstances.
Could you perhaps, or I would ask--
We really do need to move on, but we're not going to act on this anyways, but go ahead.
You know, I haven't heard, we don't routinely in our meetings, explain that we are a limited public forum and what that means. And maybe, maybe we need some kind of a framing set of comments before we even open up public comments and opportunities to speak. I mean, no one wants to violate First Amendment rights. And no one wants to, to lessen transparency. One wants to get the public's business done in an orderly fashion.
Just on that last point, if you're ever thinking about saving time, and of course, I'm not suggesting this, but just reminding you of something that we talked about some time ago. The provision for there to be public comments on non-agenda items only pertains to regular meetings. It does not, that is, the Brown Act provision calling for such does not pertain to special meetings. You, as a matter of course, and in order to serve the public, allow for and encourage public comment on non-agenda items during special meetings, too. But that's one more thing, if there is an abuse of that, that you can consider reviewing.
Thank you. In the interest of moving on--
We have public comment on this item.
Thank you, Dr. Noel, retired scientist. Thank you for referring to my First Amendment rights, because they mean a lot to me. And they should mean a lot to you. My creed is from Dr. Seuss. Be who you are and say what you feel, for those who mind don't matter, and those who matter don't mind. I'm going to guess you had this on the agenda to talk about me. Kate Smith. So, I want you to know, I'm not here to make friends, as Craig Price stated. I'm here to expose corruption. I don't care if you don't like me and don't want me to speak. I'm here to reform education. I don't care that you scorn me, humiliate me, vilify me, dismiss me. I am passionate about democratic education, because I am a patriot, and I love my country. I will speak up, and I will stand for truth and justice and the American way against humorless arrogance, illusory prestige, brute force, and primeval stupidity, wherever and whenever I am called by my intelligence and by God. If not me, who? If not now, when? I respectfully ask the board to engage in some self-scrutiny. At the last meeting, if you review it--
This is exactly off of point.
I will talk about last meeting where you--
This is--
You violated my First Amendment rights. You violated the Brown Act.
Please stay on point.
You violated my rights, and you violated the Brown Act. And when you didn't even understand--
Please stay on point.
When you did not understand what I was saying--
Do you really want me to stop you?
You adjourned me because you did not understand what I was saying, but the truth is, I was--
Twenty, you only have 20 seconds. Go on, finish. But please stay on point.
Okay, a few more little board points you might want to put down for public participation. Why don't you ask in your, why don't you, let's put this down, that the board would listen to people. Could we put that down in your board policy? That the board would show--
Thank you.
That's time, Ms. Smith.
We're going to move on from, if it's okay with you, Mr. Smith, I'm going to move to F3 and come back to F2, because we have people here to speak to F3. So, the second reading and approval of the Career Technical Education Plan.
I'm going to ask Robin Sowoski, our Associate Superintendent for Education, to introduce this.
Okay, before you, again, is the plan for our career technical education. As you recalled, our last board meeting, we had quite a few presentations. We had teachers in the room, we had Dr. Cynthia White with a PowerPoint explaining the pathways and our plan, the fact that we had a transition plan, and the different funding sources that support this, our program. Dr. White is ready to have PowerPoint slides available in case anyone has questions or needs more information. But at this point, I think, I want to say that you asked some wonderful questions last time. Really got us researching many of the academies, the different programs within the career technical education programs that we have at all three schools. And some of your questions were answered in the board brief. You had quite a few items that you asked for, some you may not have asked for that we just provided. And from that, we are doing a lot of researching ourselves. We're working with the principals and the directors and addressing some issues around the demographics and the recruiting for students in certain academies, the letters that go out for support for the academies, and other items that you raised questions about. So, I want you to know that we are looking into that. We're not saying status quo is exactly how we want it to be. So, we will further, we'll have information about that in the future. Tonight, the plan is up for your approval so that we can move forward. It is a five-year plan, so within the first phase, it means we're really building, developing, and changing as we go. So, it's, it's a beginning step. And we have people here in the audience to answer any questions you might have.
I want to thank you, Ms. Sowoski. But what the others of you may or may not know is that I have bombarded her with questions. And Mr. Smith, who has not answered my questions. And, well, he's, I've been patient, because you've had other things going. I have learned a great deal about it. I am still quite concerned about a number of issues about all academies and about some particular academies. I think we have to, we have to include academies in then these statements, like in our focus goals when we're talking about trying to achieve better representation of underrepresented groups. The data that you supplied were worse than the data we had seen only a few weeks before and create an impression that we basically have segregated academies on a lot of our campuses. And I know none of us wants to see that, and I think that's something that has to be addressed. My quarrel with two of the academies is that, in my opinion, they are out of compliance with the laws and regulations pertaining to the use of California Partnership Academy funds, which are intended for at-risk students. And while I'm going to vote for this plan, I want to make sure that the record shows that I have serious reservations when it comes to those-- that I have serious reservations when it comes to those academies. And I would, and I will continue to pursue this issue in whatever way I think will get some results. I think it's wholly inappropriate for our district to be spending the funds the way they're being spent for those academies. And that includes the matching funds. So thank you very much, I do appreciate your help.
I'd like to move to approve the CTE plan for 2008 through 2012. And I assume that the Board will see revisions in that four-year span of time.
Absolutely. We'll do more than just written. We'll probably have some more presentations and all to let you know how the pathways are developing and all.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes four with one absence. Now we can go back to F2.
Well, F2 is the approval of the 45-day revision to the district's budget, based on final adoption of the state budget. We received the state budget very late this year. We have revised our budget, consistent with the state budget. It looks like there's more trouble ahead, but, but starting with this point, with the 45-day revision, we'd like to give you the information on what the state budget does to our budget. Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent, will lead the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. As the Board knows, we're required by law to adopt a budget by June 30th of each fiscal year, sometimes weeks, sometimes months, and in this particular instance, 85 days prior to the state's adoption of their budget. Once the states adopts their budget, we have the discretion to revise our budget under what's called a 45-day revise. The requirement to revise our budget is not a requirement per se, a requirement to make available to the public any revisions we made as a result of the state's budget and its impact on our budget. What you see here, and I'm going to have Meg Jete, our Director of Fiscal Services, come up, is basically our analysis of the differences on the unrestricted side of the ledger relative to our adopted budget versus the 45-day revise, and the amount of net increased unrestricted dollars we've received. We also know that, based on our budget, we factored in a 6.5% cut to categorical programs at the state level. That was also restored at the final state adopted budget, and we'll be bringing back those revisions at first interim, since they're more detailed. So I'm going to let Meg go over this briefly, and then I'll talk about our recommendations with respect to the new revenue, and also some of the implications of the state's budget and the deteriorating state economy on our multi-year projection that we'll be presenting at first interim. Meg?
Thank you. Boy, you really know how to slide right in there, a little depressing stuff. Well, I have a little good news. The overall effect is of these changes from the adopted budget to the 45-day revise is about $745,000, which is good news. About, a little over $500,000 is on the revenue limit because of the lesser of the deficit, if you want to call it that. The deficit was decreased. The restoration of the K3 CSR and the ninth grade CSR, the Morgan Hart Program. And then the lottery during the May revise, when you developed your budget, the rates were higher, and they went down. So that's why you see a negative in that respect. But overall, $745,000 increase to the unrestricted side of the budget.
And so what we're going to recommend at this point in time is that the Board just put that amount of revenue into a placeholder, a holding account. We know there's a storm brewing. Basically, we heard from the Governor's Office today that basically the estimates relative to the state's budget deficit had swollen from roughly $3 billion to an estimated four to eight, and we're going to be looking at mid-year cuts. Basically, the Governor is expected to convene the legislature on November 5th after the election. Members of the Ed Coalition, which I would have been there, except I had a Board meeting tonight, heard today that basically the Governor is warning that this is basically going to be a long ride. And as Dr. Sarvis has used the metaphor, we're going into a long, dark tunnel. And so we're going to have to be cautious, and, you know, we've been very conservative up to this point. I think you'll see us both at first interim coming back with revisions relative to not only revised revenue and expenditure estimates based on cost-of-living adjustments and deficits, but we also need to basically look at what's going on demographically. We know we're up a bit in the elementary and how that factors in, and we also know that our decline is not as significant in the secondary, which won't help us this year, will help us in 9-10, because our projection is basically not as severe as far as decline. So we're looking at all of those variables, and we'll be bringing that back in a multi-year projection along with the first interim report, and we'll be apprising you of any ongoing developments relative to the state's economic picture and how it impacts our local situation as soon as we have more information available. We will probably also be bringing back a recommendation relative to taking the amount of categorical money that was restored due to the 6.5% state categorical deficit being restored, and putting that in a placeholder as well, based on the probability that we might have flexibility to move some of those restricted dollars to the unrestricted side of the ledger to shore up some of the issues we might be confronted in the event there are mid-year cuts, or what happens on a multi-year basis. So at this point, we're just recommending that the Board basically accept the information and basically authorize us to put the $745,000 in a placeholder, knowing that it could be stripped back out of our budget through a mid-year cut, you know, in the next couple of months. And I'd be more than happy, and Meg would be more than happy, to answer any questions you might have.
Just a comment. As painful as budget cutting was in the spring, I feel like we're as well positioned as any district in California for moving forward into, into the unknown. And hopefully, we will have some flexibility with, with these funds. But I will make, while I'm making a comment, I'll also make a motion to approve this 45-day revision to put these funds in a placeholder account.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes four with one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep you here. The second reading and adoption of Board Policy, 3460.1, Audit Committee.
We had this on an earlier agenda, but we wanted to carry it to Board discussion. So Eric Smith, again, our Deputy Superintendent, will lead this presentation. This is on the Audit Committee, F4.
This is a second reading of the Board Policy on Audit Committee. We've had a significant amount of discussion, although I understand there might be some suggested language changes, and so we're here to discuss that, and hopefully with those modifications, move it to approval. One of the things I would like to update the Board on, we are in the process of hiring an internal auditor. We basically have conducted, we've actually went out once, didn't find the candidate we wanted, so we went out again, and now we're in the final interviews, and we'll hopefully be resolving that shortly. I only bring that up because you see that person as a resource to this committee, and we'd like to have that person on board before the committee was convened.
Okay. Any, yeah, Bob, Dr. Noel?
Yes, I mean, I don't think you were here, but my colleagues will, I hope, forgive me for being repetitious. The, this Audit Committee essentially is to be a guardian over the external auditors, as I read it. That's its primary function.
That's a significant function of it.
What other functions does it have?
Well, if it works in conjunction with the internal auditor, it can also basically, in its charge, review other things that would be of importance in terms of auditing function, looking at our fiscal accountability checklists.
Internal auditor is not this committee, it's a...
The internal auditor is going to be a resource to this committee.
Resource this committee, yeah.
Right.
Okay. So I think of the, of the Audit Committee as guardians, overseers.
To some extent, to basically provide another level of oversight over, other than just the Board of Trustees, relative to fiscal accountability.
This language, all, this language makes it oversight over the external auditing firm that we hire to do our external audits. And these firms are all approved by the State of California.
That's correct.
So on. Okay. In my 10 years on the Board, I have never heard us, I've never heard a discussion of such failings on part of external auditors that would require us to create a committee to oversee them. I mean, we hire them to oversee us. Okay? So I, so I have a lot of trouble with, just fundamental structural difficulty with it. I think, I think that's, that's good for openers.
Can I just interject at that, at this point? Because my understanding was that it would be this committee's function to review that external audit, and to deal with the items that are found on the external audit.
Outstanding.
Audit, and many of those items come up year after year after year, and to try and, and find, to build us toward permanent solutions to those items that recur as a result of the external audit.
That's correct. I wouldn't say that the Audit Committee oversees the independent auditor. I'd say it works hand in hand relative to whatever outstanding issues there might be in the district, and you mentioned some of those. But basically, the scope can be whatever you want it to be, just as long as it provides some of the fundamental points that are in the policy.
For example, on the external audit, we often have results from secondary schools on ASB accounts.
Yeah.
So I would think that it would be the function of this committee.
And you're going to have them again.
To make certain that those situations are rectified.
Yeah, we have, there are, and there are a number of findings. There used to be cafeteria fund finding.
Yeah.
All right.
But I mean, it could look at anything from cash, you know, how we deposit, how we provide separation of duties between receiving cash and basically depositing into the county treasury. Do we have a proper delineation between purchasing and accounts payable? Our health and welfare benefit being reconciled to the general ledger on a monthly basis? What's going on with ASB accounting, and how can we remedy? And then, all those things, basically, the Audit Committee works with both the internal auditor and the external auditor, basically to improve the controls, so we don't see those kind of things pop up in our audit every year, which theoretically would make us a better district.
My second point, and I would stress that we're building institutions here, because as far as I'm concerned, I think we don't need to watch you, okay? You're doing a great job, and I, and I have infinite trust in, in everything you do, okay?
And, and what I would say, Dr. Noel...
I say that is, that's personal.
No, I understand, and, Dr. Noel, I don't recall getting a request I didn't respond to, so if it happened prior to me going on vacation.
Coming in this...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So, since it was on TV. But I, I think the issue with the Audit Committee, this is part of School Services of California recommendation, and basically, I've been in districts that have and have not had Audit Committees, and, you know, I'm not wed to it. If you guys don't want to do it, it's, I'm not going to be shedding tears, although I think Audit Committees do provide an important function.
Okay. Okay, then, in which case, since this was my inspiration, let me tell you what, what it was about.
Okay.
It was about the $5 million mistake. It was about not knowing what was going on. It was about error and misjudgment, and whatever else, and questions of competence. Now, since we have a, on a personal level, you're a competent guy, and I don't, and we don't need an Audit Committee for you, but we're building institutions here that are, that don't, you know, that, that have to serve all kinds of people who may or may not move through these positions in the district. And I cannot believe that had there been more oversight by some kind of a committee, call it an Audit Committee or something else, but had there not been oversight by people who, including at least one CPA, by outsiders, during those turbulent times, when we had so much fiscal chaos in this district, that it would have, I cannot believe that would have helped, that would have helped, that we would have avoided those errors. And that's, for me, what this is about. It's about someone, not once a year, someone who, someone watching what we're doing. The problem with once a year is it's one, two problems. It's once a year. Secondly, those guys work until they spend up a certain amount of money, and they stop asking questions. They work on a limited budget. They're not going to probe deeper and deeper and deeper. And so we get these, if there's a problem with the audit reports, is they often are too shallow. So that's what, that's what this proposal...
The Audit Report is constrained both by what the State Controller's Office prescribes them to look at, and economics. Obviously, you know, if you buy an audit for $85,000, they're not going to spend $150,000 on the audit. So you're absolutely right there.
Exactly.
I have some, some questions also.
Thank you very much.
I wondered, is, would establishing an Audit Committee require any additional staff time?
Well, one of the things you'll see the way it's crafted is that basically, we assigned the internal auditor to work with that, so it would not be an impact on either mine or Meg's time, the way it's structured right now. You know, could it impact additional staff time relative to maybe somebody taking minutes or something like that? That could be. But I don't think it's going to be voluminous by any means.
Okay. Okay. And then also, I had a question about how the members of the community would be appointed, well, not, I guess not appointed, because, but how will they be recruited?
I'm not sure, this, I know this refers to your Board bylaws relative to Brown Act Committees, and I'm not sure if that's prescribed in those bylaws or not, but I know it refers to the composition of the committee, is basically referred to in those bylaws.
It's the Board Committee, it's a Brown Act governed.
But I'm not sure you...
Is that the intent here?
Yeah, that's the intent, and the issue is, I know that we basically have used, like I think the last time when we did the facilities surplus committee, we used a selection process relative to, I guess, a recruitment process, and I would imagine we would do something similar to that. But obviously, we'd like to see specific criteria, you know, we'd like to see people that, with a business orientation and things of that nature on that committee. I mean, I think one of the intangible issues with an Audit Committee, if you have well-respected members of the business community, it builds credibility relative to the district's finances, and it does two things. One, they have an understanding, and they can also act as ambassadors in terms of basically explaining school finance once they learn it, which is, you know, I saw there was a reference in there, are we going to, in the Board Focus Goals, you know, are we going to communicate the business plans in Spanish? Well, we already speak Greek, so, yeah.
Well, that actually, you know, most of our committees tend to not be particularly diverse in terms of the segments of the community that are represented on them. So that was part of my question, because recently, I, you know, heard from members of the public who feel that a lot of these kinds of committees, a lot of the things that go on at the district, don't feel...
Diverse.
Well, don't feel inclusive of them. So I think what, we probably need to do something a little bit different than what we have been doing.
And I think...
Because what we have been doing hasn't resulted in very much diversity.
Yeah, and I think that's wide open for the Board to decide how they're going to do that.
So, Dr. Noel, can I ask you a question? You brought this forward, I believe, to begin with. You sound like you're not so sure whether we need it right now. Is it something you want to put on the table and have in our policies, or do you want to...
I would like to see it have, have, have functions that are a little bit more, that involve a little more oversight of the district, not, not of the auditor of the district, that too, but of the district. To, and especially to fill in between the year. When we get that audit report, how long is it after the end of fiscal year we get that?
But I think that's the whole purpose of having an internal auditor, is to basically strengthen your internal controls. And I, I know where you're going. Basically, what you're saying, if you can build internal capacity that would prevent management erosion of controls, and we can somehow make that systemic, we'll be stronger as an organization, and there's no doubt about it. And I think, you know, internal auditor is basically a first step in doing that, because it can look at all those issues, and it also can provide a level of quality control that we don't have right now, because we're so rushed doing everything else, so...
But you understand, from Boards, one of the, there was a meeting on June... But you understand, from board's point of view, I, there was a, a meeting on June, June twenty-ninth. At five o'clock in the afternoon, we were presented with a, a budget and a, what do you call that summary report that goes before?
The Saks form?
Estimated, estimated actual.
Estimated actions.
And, and we had no chance to unpack it. We had no, we didn't know what it meant. It was, the fiscal year ended the next day, which was Saturday. We had to act. We had no one to turn to, except the person who was telling us. We had no way to, to have a check on whether the work that was, that was, that went into that, upon which it rested, was good work, bad work, or, or anything. That was, that's the problem that we have. And, and, and I can see, I can see the internal auditor, you're talking about, I can see that being a very crucial part of this. But I also see the need for someone from outside who, who, who can read these reports quickly. You know, I mean, a professional, who can also advise the board. I love that part in here, directly talking to the board. So we, so we get outside of the framework of the organization.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Ms. Cordell. Since it's clear, it's clear that we don't seem to have consensus on approving this committee the way that it is at this point. We clearly will have to bring it back to another, to another agenda. So I'm wondering if we could maybe request that any board members who have additional comments on this or suggestions for how it might be revised, could forward those to the superintendent? And we could maybe get them in the next board brief, so that we could have a chance to look at them before it comes back to us.
I'd love an opportunity to sound with, with Mr. Smith and, and understand it better.
Okay, so it'll come back.
Speaker on this item, Ed Heron. So you're, you don't want to make your comment. Okay.
Careful, Mr. Price is still here.
Ed Heron, in your cover memo, you talk about a majority of us members from outside the district, defined district.
District office.
Can you clarify that then?
We had that confusion before and I didn't catch it on the cover.
All right, well, it'll come back. So we're on to F four, sorry, we just did F four, F five. Fundraising and field naming.
Dave Hetjunk, our Director of Facilities, will present this.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves, members of the board. A few weeks ago, a group from Dos Publos came to see me about a proposal to fundraise for artificial turf at the new stadium. Four or five members met in my office. I was impressed with the amount of research they've done, the amount of homework they've done, people that they've talked to for, to familiarize himself with, with the product, the project, the estimated costs. And so I was pleased to, to put forward an agenda item, per their request, to approve a fundraising application. And they're also requesting then, a field naming opportunities based on donations to that field. There's representatives of the school here tonight. I'll let them talk about their, their campaign, their, their plans for their fundraising effort. But as far as, as doing their due diligence before they came forward with a proposal, like I say, I was really impressed with the work and investigation that they've done.
Marlis Bohm, I am a parent volunteer and I'm also a member of Charger Associates. Dr. Sarves, members of the board, happy to be here. We also have Mark Swanitz, our principal, and Dan Feldhouse, our athletic director, who are all behind this proposal. So Dave has gone through the request for fundraising, which is to replace the main stadium grass field with a turf field. And the second approval is to offer a naming opportunity for the field if we have a large donor coming forth. Obviously, that name would be subject to board approval and we are suggesting a donation amount of five hundred thousand dollars. The reason we are putting this forward is, first, for my purpose as a parent, for safety. Studies have proven that the injuries on a turf field and the severity of the injuries and the length of recovery time are significantly less. Complicating that, we have a field that is used very, very extensively. So if you can switch to the next one. The second reason for, in addition to safety, is that this will increase the opportunity to actually use that turf field. We're limited, obviously, not wanting to overuse the field. And it has to be reseeded every year. It certainly has to be maintained very well. A turf field has the opportunity to be used twenty-four seven if lights and personnel and everything else were there. It will offer the use for a wide spectrum of users, not only PE departments and the other athletic programs that typically use the turf, but also the possibility for use permits with our regular community use. Environmental impacts are definitely would be reduced water usage. There are opportunities for other environmental impacts in a positive way, as in recycled materials. There is spraying that happens on regular fields. Some of those would go away as well. The expected costs, we're pretty confident that these are pretty accurate. The fifty thousand dollars is a quote from Steve Flowers for engineering, surveying, and soils testing. The five hundred thousand for product and installation is on the high end of what the products are that are out there. The grading and site preparation is also a standard quoted by Granite Construction, a large contractor here in town, as an average, again, on the high side of what we have been quoted. We've checked with a number of fields from Santa Maria all the way down to Moore Park, which are in our climate area. And that is pretty standard expectation. Fifteen thousand dollars for maintenance equipment and training. We will have to get some specialized equipment to maintain this. And we will want the maintenance people to be trained to do it the right way. And then we wanted to make sure we had a contingency fund in there. We do have a brand-new track out of Dos Publos. We definitely will have to go across that track to get to our field, so we know that we will have some repairs there. Any project that you get into, there's always something unexpected. So we wanted to make sure there was an allowance for that. The budget comes to one point two million. Fundraising campaign, we are, we were feeling very, very optimistic when we started this project at the beginning of, end of September, beginning of October. We're still very optimistic that we can do it. We have a lot of energy and we have some really well-connected people and people really willing to put themselves out there to make this happen. We have been offered a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar challenge grant. That will make life a lot easier for us to kick this off. Target sources, we've got the philanthropists, foundations, and large companies. We have identified a number of those that are supporters of athletics. They're supporters of education. They're supporters of Dos Publos as a high school. Same thing for small to mid-sized companies, individuals, and community groups. We have identified a number of those as well as being targets. And the last part of the campaign is individuals, alumni, families, and current students. That part of the campaign is a ten dollar per square foot activity. And we're hoping that we'll get lots of opportunities with that. The last slide relates to the projected timeline. This one came out because we really are trying to have this installed next summer. In order to have it installed next summer, we backed it up from the start, potential start date of June eighth. And we need this type of timing in there to do the proper bid approvals and advertisement for bids, et cetera. So it's an ambitious fundraising plan, but we're optimistic we can make it happen. So thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions for Mr. Swanitz and Mr. Feldhouse as well.
Thank you. You would be set up for football?
Football and soccer in terms of striping, but it could be used for other things as well.
It can be used for both. Other questions?
No, I, actually, you answered my question, which had to do with your ability to fundraise. I mean, clearly you've put together a, a great estimate of what you're going to need, but it sounds like you've already started to address your fundraising capacity. And you already have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar matching fund, which is fantastic. I don't know if board members have other comments. There is a comment from the, a member of the public.
I have, I have a concern. And it goes back to our discussion we've had on numerous occasions of the policy. And I've always liked the seventy-five percent fundraising deadline. But I'm concerned with the other twenty-five percent. I've always been concerned, but especially in today's budget situation. If we're looking at the possibility of mid-year cuts and, and, and severe budgetary restrictions going on into that next year. I would hate to see us end up having to pay anything because of fundraising shortfalls. I'd hate to see us have, have, have to, this is really talking to my colleagues. I'd hate to see us have to even advance money for the project because we are so hard strapped and don't know exactly where we're headed. I don't, that's my main concern.
And it's a good concern. It's not our anticipation that the district will be paying anything on this part of it. We have on here a hundred percent fundraising has to be done before bids are awarded. So we can get it up to a certain point and we still won't award bids unless a hundred percent is there. That is in there.
That you are, you're paying for that?
As far as the district planning or as far as the engineering? The engineering planning and the bid specifications by the engineer is on the fundraising, yes.
We should differentiate between these two points, though. Going to bid is a seventy-five percent level. So once seventy-five percent of the funds have been raised, we can go to bid. But, but do note the May twelfth board award. The board award would be dependent upon one hundred percent fundraising. I mean, this is, this is a group who's looking out for the district.
So you're, you feel confident that this is not going to encroach upon our district budget at all?
The board will decide whether to award the bid and the board will decide on this basis.
Why don't I hear a direct answer to my question?
Yes, I am confident. How can I say it differently?
Well, I think.
That looked pretty good.
I, I think what, Dr. It's not going to be up to him, it's going to be up to us. So to the extent that we are willing to make that decision, we, we can be confident.
Yeah, I think the important thing to remember is the board always reserves the right to reject all bids.
Well, if I could just interject, I think that the fear of fundraising during the bond projects was that somehow it would fall short and then money would be taken from bond funds to backfill. And while we're fortunate that that did not occur, there is no more bond funding on which to fall back. We have reached just about the extent of that bond.
Fees and we have things like that always somewhere. Let me, let me just, let me say it even more, more to the point. You get to that point and a good group like you have done all this work and gotten all this money. No board is, I should say no board. It's very, it's the politics of that dynamic encourage boards to say yes when probably the, when, when the economics may be saying no. And, and, and I've seen it happen and I'm concerned, because I see the whole phenomenon. It's a power, very powerful dynamic. Now, I, I reckon Mrs. Hart, Mrs. Cordell is absolutely right. It's, we'll be up to the board. And, and even worse, we probably can't tie that board's hands, because they, any, any board can undo what any other board did, unless there's a contract, there's a contract.
That's what I was about to say. As always, once you approve the fundraising activity and the fundraisers do start the process, we always go to legal counsel. Legal counsel drafts a contract that both parties can live with. And that contract is brought before the board, very similar to what we did when, when Dos Publos raised funds to, to resurface the track recently. And the vendor, Flowers and Associates Engineering Firm, this fundraising group is, is hiring them. They're paying that bill. So, so their contract would, would be with that engineer. He, he's an engineer who's done a lot of work for the district. We're very comfortable with that engineer. And so as far as the design fees go, you know, they're, they're contracting directly with the designers. So the district wouldn't have any liability towards those design fees. The district, as with all cases, we would furnish project management. And everything else would be, as far as, as the fundraising group would be responsible for. The only question would be what type of inspector we need and, and and we'll know that once we get into the development of the plans and specifications. And that cost of that inspector, again, would be borne by, by the fundraising group. And so I, I'm very comfortable in standing up here and saying, you know, if, if they didn't have a hundred percent of the funds by, by May twelfth, maybe they need to look at doing the project the following summer. And, and the only drawback to that would be if some of their money was contingent upon a timeline. And, and that's like you say, Dr. Noel, when, when the political process comes in. But there, but it'd be nice to have it done this coming summer, but, but there's no urgency that says they can't play football or soccer or other things on this. And this would not, like I say, it would, it would increase the available use of this facility during the school day, because as, as you well know, football fields after the first three or four weeks of the football season start to look a little brown. And, and a lot of people and, and PE activities and other things that, that have to take place other than on the football field, because the site wants to make that football field last to the end of football season, would be able to utilize this facility during the school day for, for athletic practice and physical education, rather than tearing up some other field or, or having double use on a field. So, so it really, really serves that purpose.
Maybe you want to address.
It would not affect the, the extracurricular use per, per the environmental review documents that have already been processed. That, that still stands. This would not increase night football games or night JV, JV games or anything else. It would have no effect on that.
Mr. Hetjunk, I hate to interrupt you, but a lot of this sounds very, very familiar. And, and yet we can look back not too many years ago to situations in which fundraising fell short and the district got caught having to pick up the tab and the tab sometimes was in the millions. And, and I, and I know you'll quickly say, well, some of that was state matching funds. Those state matching funds, as you taught me, did not come earmarked for those projects. They could have been used for other things like new classrooms and so on. And I, and it's just this concern I, I have, that we're going to find ourselves in that position at a time when we much, we may have much, much more severe constraints, given the economic situation.
Can I, um, can I?
And I'm not proposing, I just want some guarantees.
The only guarantee that I can give you is, is that the only, that, that, that my recommendation on May twelfth for, for board award would they, would be that they have one hundred percent of their fundraising completed, plus a contingency to approve. Otherwise, it's up to the board what they want to do. But, but, I try not to use the word guarantee and promise.
I'm sorry, I, I real, I mean, I think most of us know that there's no such thing as a guarantee in these areas. And I, I don't want to penalize members of the public who are willing to give tremendous amounts of time and money to our schools because we're not confident in ourselves that we'll make a sound decision when that time comes. But I do have a question, which is, would, I know that there's a startup, you know, contingency for, for equipment and training, et cetera, that would be required for maintenance of the field. Is there likely to be any additional cost for ongoing maintenance beyond, over what we currently incur?
We would assume that those ongoing costs would be part of the site gardener's responsibility. The savings to the general fund would be, we would spend less money on water.
Okay, thank you.
And seeding and pest, pesticides and gopher control and all that.
But, but it is going to take, they, they, Dos Publos and, or the fundraisers will have to purchase some equipment. And, and basically from that point on, it's manpower and, and maintaining, paying for maintaining or replacing that equipment in the future, or depending on the type of system that they choose, adding some of the little beads or, or whatever may need replenishing down the road to, to prolong the life of the turf.
Well, it's very exciting. I think we have some public comment. So if you'll sit down, we'll, we'll come back to you, just a second.
Rich Foster?
Could you leave that back up?
Good evening. My name's Rich Foster. I would encourage you to defer doing anything on this for the time being for three significant reasons. The first one being is currently you have three million dollars pledged towards an educational facility for engineering at Dos Publos. Is it really the board's intent to pit academics against athletics and fundraising? We're not talking the boom times in our economy. So you have people trying to raise three million here and people trying to raise one point two million here. You have to ask yourself, what is the message this board wants to give to the community? Are we behind education or are we behind sports? They can always do this later, but. this later, but I think you're undercutting what seems to be a very valid and worthwhile program in the engineering technology if you go and start adapting other programs, especially at the same facility for fundraising. Now, granted, your average jock and your average engineer is usually not the same crowd, but there's gotta be some crossovers here. Uh, the second reason I would urge you not to rush into this is because all you have to do is go home and simply Google Astro, um, AstroTurf, artificial turf, lead contamination and toxins. And the jury still seems to be very much out on the safety of this stuff. Originally, there was issues with the nylon developing lead content. Currently, the issue is the ground up rubber tires they use to pad the thing. They're questioning the, the safety of it. The Consumer Product Safety Commission in August came out with a report that said, oh, yes, it's safe. Just don't let any seven-year-olds get anywhere near it, and if they do, wash their hands afterwards. To which the Attorney General for the State of Connecticut demanded an immediate revisal of this thing to clarify the position. At the current time, there are AstroTurf surfaces being torn out of academic facilities in New Jersey. So, the question be, if it does turn out to be toxic, who's gonna pay to remove it? Are we gonna have a toxic waste site at our school site? You know, we don't have any information on what's being installed. There's no long-term tests. Uh, Consumer Product Safety tested twenty-eight samples out of thirty-five hundred different products that are currently out there, or fields that are currently out there. There's very much still major questions on the safety of this. And so, you, you leave yourself wide open to liability suits down the road if you end up with people getting contamination from lead or other byproducts from the dust. The, the dust from the ground up rubber they put in it can actually is, becomes airborne. It acts like dust and it can be inhaled by people landing on the field. I think you need far more information before you approve this kind of fundraising. Um, and thirdly, and I, it's the cost analysis. Let's see some numbers. What are we spending on maintaining our football field right now in terms of water, maintenance, grooming, fertilizing? I know there's gotta be significant expenses involved there. You may not factor those out separately right now versus what are the maintenance costs of sweeping and vacuuming artificial turf? And what is the cost of replacing it?
Twenty seconds.
How long does it last? So, I, I would encourage you not to pit two programs against each other and, and put this off for at least a year or at least until after you've done your technical program with the engineer students. Thank you.
Thank you. Um-
I, I guess I missed something. Uh, what is the nature of this product that's going down?
I don't think that it was-
Can I re-
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, I'd actually like to respond to all three points if I can, but I can respond specifically to your question first. How would you like to do that? All three? Okay. Um, first, I want to, I want to emphasize that everybody in this group is also very, very much in favor of the Engineering Academy going forward, including a couple of people are actively working to help support that one as well and have donated money to that. So, I don't believe there's a, a difference between the two, the groups that we are targeting to fund this are really very much aligned towards athletics, not towards engineering. Um, I don't think we're going after the same buckets. Relative to the safety, a lot of research was done on that before we even decided to move forward to request this. The old lead contamination issues were very true with AstroTurf, which was the original product that was out there with the NFL back whenever it first came out, fifteen years ago or whatever. They do not make that anymore. It is not, it was in the fibers that were there. Those fibers are not used anymore in turf field. There is a lot of studies out there, um, proving that the, so first of all, the lead contamination isn't there. The dust inhale, inhaling, the studies that I have read on that have shown, have proven it to be very, very infinitesimal. And it was basically saying you had to ingest it as a child or you had to, um, be, I can't remember, but it was very, very small. Um, and I do have copies of those. But, the, the safety, I, as a parent, I would not be here before you if I had not felt very confident about that. Um, the studies are out there and they're out there on current technology. The technology has changed a lot from when it was first introduced. On the cost analysis, we didn't bring that forward because I did not have the exact cost for our particular stadium field. But, the research, again, that we have that is quoting pretty much, um, a savings almost universally because you are not doing the same kind of maintenance. You're not doing the same kind of water usage. You're not reseeding the field, which, I don't know, is that twenty thousand? I'm not sure. Um, you're not, um, having to spray it the same way. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit dry here. But, um, so I, I believe that in our research, we answered those questions. And I feel very confident that the product we put out there would not be a non-safe product. Now, having said that, the other thing is the liability issues. You did ask about the replacement cost. There will be a replacement cost. It's, could be anywhere from eight to fifteen years. It would not be the whole project. It would be the turf itself project. The better maintained it is, the longer that surface lasts. So, if the amount of money that, for example, you were saving on maintenance or the amount of money you were getting in addition for usage fees could be kind of put away in a reserve fund for a period of time, you'd probably have that very easily within the period of time before it needed to be replaced.
A question because on the, on the actual expected cost, there's no breakout between the product expense and the installation expense. It's a single figure.
No, it was half and half. Five hundred thousand was for the grading and excavi- yeah, or the, yeah, grading and excavation, which is the underneath part that you would not have to redo.
Right. And five hundred thousand was for the actual product and the installation?
Yes.
Do you have a breakdown of the cost of the actual product and the cost of installation?
No.
Okay.
I, I, I'm very hon- I, I didn't understand at first that this isn't grass. I beg your pardon. I done, I missed that. Uh, and that gives me concerns quite different than the fundraising concerns. Uh, I, I would, I would not feel comfortable supporting this without an independent study of the health and safety issues. Uh, and particularly, just from what little I hear, 'cause I'm not a jock nor do I follow sports, but I hear that there are increased injuries on these kinds of surfaces, uh, that their injuries are of different kind. Uh, and, and I would like to get an independent evaluation of that at your expense. Okay? And, uh, and I would like to see, I'd like, you know, a multi-year projection of the cost because, uh, you say in eight, eight years, it could very well need a major replacement. Uh, how does that compare to the maintenance of grass for eight years? Uh, I, I'd like to see some expert judgment on, on these issues, independent experts. Especially the sa- health and safety issues.
The, the health and safety, there are studies out there. Um, and I, we can get you definitely copies of them. And, and there are injuries-
I don't want copies of them. I want a study that's done for us.
Well-
Of that, of that site. I personally, I mean, I, I know how to review the literature and go find copies and, but the thing about that is you don't know, you don't know the one you didn't hear, know about that's waiting around the corner.
Right.
Somebody who knows that field knows that literature.
What, what you do have to recognize is there are a lot of injuries on the field as it is as well. There are a lot of gopher holes. There's ruts in the field. There's, I mean-
That's the need for a study.
Well, I wonder if, um, the CIF or even the NCAA have done studies for various schools on the relative benefits of turf versus natural grass.
I'm sure even Ventura High could tell us or UCSB or, I mean, they're all over the place here.
Yeah, they are.
I mean, we may get this, we may get this for free, but we're, but we, we are liable.
I, I do have a question, um, kind of piggybacking on Mrs. Har- Harder's question, which is, product and installation is listed as five hundred thousand. Would, um, I, I thought I understood you to, to say that when it was replaced, it would not be that costly? Or would it maintain that same cost or maybe even higher with inflation or with, you know, adjustments? Um, would it still be that costly to replace it and install it at, when it needs replacement?
I don't have a good answer on that. I can find that out. Um, I would be guessing to answer that right now. My guess would be no, but I, I would be guessing, yeah.
Well, in the interest of trying to move things along because it sounds like we have, uh, people who are, uh, having difficulty with this, would it be possible to see some information from CIF or NC two A on, uh, artificial turf fields regarding, uh, the actual environmental risks and also, uh, health risks as in higher risk of injury? And could we also see, uh, some, uh, financial information, Mr. Hetjank, on what the current field maintenance costs are?
And I, I'll have to, I have to say, uh, now, in fairness, uh, when it comes around to a vote, I will be making a motion that the March seventeenth deadline, uh, be increased to a hundred percent fundraising before it goes out to bid, before that whole dynamic of going out to bid and, and having job walks and, uh, bid openings comes back. I may not have any support for that motion, but I'll make it.
No, no, no. It's, there's, it's just that it's always chicken and, chicken and egg because you raise a hundred percent, then you get the bids, and the bids are higher than what you've raised. And then there's some period of time in which you would have to fundraise in order to meet the lowest bid.
Let's hope that, not twenty-five percent.
Okay. Mr. Swans, was there anything you wanted to add to this, any?
I have a second.
You can use the microphone front or whichever.
Only that we, we have, I, I have great confidence in the committee that's been looking into this. I know they have done a lot of the research and they have, uh, been putting me in the process. And we've talked about the, the research studies that exist out there about the safety of the field. We've talked about the conflicts of interest with the garage fundraising, the, uh, Engineering Academy. And they know that that's a priority of mine, that we get that engineering facility built also. And, um, given some of the conversations that we've had about the donors, that you agree that they are targeting a different demographic of potential donors and would not be in conflict with the Engineering Academy.
Mr. Swans, can I interrupt you? Remind me what the deadline is for the matching funds to access the state grant.
Mr. Hetjank, do you remember the answer to that question, I have to leave it to Mark.
We're currently in, in the process of going, uh, with the Division of State Architect Review. Uh, don't have the date, uh, at hand, but in approximately seven months, we're due to have our completed application, what they call a Form 5005, cost estimates, DSA-approved plans. And then we submit that to the state for approval. It may take them one to two months to approve that. Once they approve that and that project is funded, we have eighteen months to access those fifty percent state matching funds or they go back into the pot. So, anytime, anytime between the time that, that we get our approval and eighteen months down the road, we can access our funds as soon as we have a notice to proceed issued to the contractor and a signed contract.
So, it's a considerably longer window of time than what's in front of us?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Swans, was there anything?
The only other further comment that I would like to, to raise, raise here is that, uh, it's my understanding that, and I'm not sure exactly what Board action occurred in, in approving it, that San Marcos High School is also currently in the process of raising money and preparing for this. So, in the interest of equity, all other things being equal, um, we would request your approval for that same purpose.
Has San Marcos been before us? I, I thought so. I asked.
Yes, they have. And you did grant them approval.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, well, I have, um, given that, but we still, the Board seems to want to-
So, when is Santa Barbara High School coming forward?
Yeah, right.
Soon.
Uh, I hope that two weeks doesn't, um, doesn't delay much. Um, if you'll pardon our letting us go for another two weeks, it'll come back.
Is it possible to get this information on a Board brief and then put it on a consent agenda in two weeks?
That would be a good idea.
Okay.
I would prefer to do it that way.
I, I would like somehow to have, the Board brief doesn't go to a very wide public unless, it's only if they come down here. Uh, could we have it posted on the internet?
We'll, we'll get whatever in, information we can to the Board brief. Uh, we'll bring it back to the next meeting as well.
So, it'll be on the internet for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I suggest we take a break now. So, another-
And just before you do, uh, we will be pulling item G two, which is on the discipline policy.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna break.
Hurry, I saw, my son saw before I did. Now I'm on my turn.
Are you going tonight?
I did, I know.
Okay, we're back. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of the superintendent's evaluation form. I have a copy here. Does anyone, I distributed this two weeks ago. Does anyone have any comments on this? If not, I need a motion. Move to approve.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is public comment. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Uh, no, take that vote back.
Oh, that's okay. You can vote. Uh, evaluation is the only means to success. And evaluation is written into the IEP on a regular basis. No grant is approved without-
It's on, it's on.
Yeah, stay on topic, please. It's on the superintendent's evaluation.
Well, right, superintendent's evaluation. So, this is a very important form. And I ask that the Board consider a correlation to the Audit Committee where Dr. Noel wanted to have some outside opinion.
Madam President, I would think that it would be reasonable to expect her, the Speaker, to address the superintendent's evaluation form-
Yes, I-
In detail.
Okay.
On the form.
Specific points about this form.
About this form. Number three, supports Board policy. Well, I asked to be on the agenda. He said he wouldn't let me be on the agenda on the fourteenth, but he said at that last meeting that I could be on the agenda on the twenty-eighth. And obviously, I'm not. He, number four-
Actually, this is about, yeah, this is about, not exactly how we're gonna evaluate, but the form.
Keeps the Board informed of any legal matters.
Madam President, the Speaker is evaluating the superintendent. We are approving a form.
Form. We're actually, just want comments on the form.
Well, I think it's important that you find a way to have an evaluation form for the public. One way was to-
Form.
Yes, we can finish.
On the form.
On the form.
What is the point of evaluating a person on a hundred different points if you're unwilling to accept-
Would you like to speak to the form?
Feedback. I am trying to speak to the assessment tool.
Madam President, may I ask that you, that you ask the Speaker to go read the form before she comes up and wants to speak to the form?
I have read the form. I am saying you could use this form and evaluate him and will still end up with Mary Starks, Mike Caston, Debbie Flores, and Diana Rigby.
Thank you. Um, I had a motion and a second. Uh, and all those in favor, yeah.
Second by, by Ms. Cora.
Yeah. And it was voted for, all those in favor. So, I am, it was passed four with one absence. I am going to, um, give this out, uh, or if you could take it with you or I will give it out and we will discuss it in closed session, um, at our next meeting. It is ready to go. We're on to F seven. Um, do I hear some motions?
Yeah.
Oh, on, in case oh eight slash oh nine dash oh three, uh, move to approve, uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not voting.
Oh, right.
I did not participate.
So, it's, uh, it passes three with two absences. I would, I guess that's what it was. You were, weren't there yet. So, it's, um, uh, Noel and Parker were absent.
Uh, in case number oh eight, oh nine dash zero four, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel. Well, it's upholding a stipulated suspension, suspended expulsion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so, it passes three zero with two absences.
In case number oh eight, oh nine dash zero six, uh, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Uh, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Do we, we need a quorum, so, um-
You have a quorum, it's just lost.
Don't we need to have, uh-
No.
You only need the majority of those present and voting.
Okay, so it passes 2-1.
Uh, I believe we need three votes.
I thought we needed-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's correct also, that's what I originally thought. Our lawyer just left.
It was 2-1, yeah.
We're gonna come back and we'll find out whether we need to do this one again, and we'll find out what has to happen. He just walked out two seconds ago here, okay, uh-
In case number 0809 dash 09, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
The stipulated agreement?
Uh, yeah, but it doesn't say that on here, so yes, the stipulated agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes 3-0 with two absent.
For the item that, that did not pass, normally we would put that on closed session at the following meeting, have a discussion in closed session, come out, take a vote on it. So we would just move it to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And that was 080906, right?
Yeah. Okay, uh, G1, revisions to board policy administrative regulations on the intra-district open enrollment.
Ann, Robin Swawski, our Associate Superintendent, will give this presentation.
Okay, this is one that we have, as, as you can see, we revised it in 2005, we spent quite a bit of time on it at that point, and there are a few revisions here that I think are important to note. On the first page of the Board Policy 5116.1, on the intra-district open enrollment, we've added on the part about the Title I, schools of a district school receiving Title I funds is identified for program improvement, corrective action, or restructuring, all students enrolled in that school shall be provided an option to transfer to another district school or charter school, and we've added the language with priority given to the lowest achieving children from low-income families, and that's per the regulations, that non-regulatory guidance that really is regulatory. So we've added that piece. On the next page, two of three-
I'm sorry, what about, the sec, section early, above that?
Mm-hmm.
At elementary schools with attendance boundaries, was that new?
That's new, and it's, it was not in our, it's not a new ed code, but it's just, it wasn't in our old, other policy, and I'm not quite sure why, but it just says additional classrooms will be opened based on attendance area enrollment only, and not due to intra-district transfer requests. So, in other words, we don't have to provide for all of the other intra-district, just with attendance area. And then on page two of three, the section, or the letter F, this was something that was actually suggested by our board member, Parker, and this, of course, went through all the principals, so everyone got to see this and respond to it, and this was, this was something that everyone liked, that we should put in there that priority shall be given to English learner students transferring from a high English learner enrollment school, greater than 50% English learners, to a low English learner enrollment, which would be less than 50%. So we're giving that not top priority, but on the priority above, you know, the employment, a parent being employed there, and other such items that are below. Any questions about that, particularly the board policy? Uh, moving on to the administrative regulation then, and I want to stop here just a moment, Dr. Noel asked about the fact that in the intra-district, uh, excuse me, on the AR in this section, it doesn't really speak to the idea of choice, it talks about it in the board policy, I went back and looked at all of the CSBA and other board policies and administrative regulations, and they all are taking the template model that talks about No Child Left Behind, but it just speaks about the dangerous school piece on the administrative-
About the what?
The, uh, oh, it's called a tran, let's see, what's it?
Precisely.
Yes, it's not dangerous school, what's the title of it? Persistently Dangerous, yes.
Oh, right, right, right.
Right, and you had commented, why isn't the choice piece here? It is in the board policy, and it's also in our exhibit that talks about how, you know, what type of priority we give, which it's right up at the top. And then I want to note too that by your comment, we started looking at other board policies that refer to Title I, and No Child Left Behind, and all those regulations. There will be some coming up in the 6,000 series, but we also found some that we're gonna bring to you that we haven't had before, that are, describe the whole program, the whole No Child Left Behind and Title I, and it has all about the different years, when you're a program improvement, year one, year two, and all, and that's in the, I guess you call them zero series, and not the thousand, it's the zero-zero, it's before you even get to the thousands.
Is that in the zero series?
Yes, that's where they, CSBA, we don't have them, but I'm gonna be bringing them back, we're just, we're looking at them, we're looking at the language, I went through them, and they're in the process, it hasn't come to cabinet yet, so I'll be bringing that. But that was an answer to your question, Dr. Noel, where, where are the references in our policies that speak to that issue of choice and, and all of that? So there are several places that it occurs.
I see it in A, under the board policy, do I have that right?
Yes, that's exactly right, it's in the board policy.
I don't see any reference to the transportation.
There should see.
And maybe that should just be in the AR, I don't know, but, uh-
Oh, up, on page three of three?
Okay.
Under transportation, this is on board policy, the district shall not be obligated to provide transportation for students who attend school outside their attendance area except as required by the following, and that's the Title I program improvement schools, and the designated as persistently dangerous, so that's when we do provide transportation.
Okay, I, I see it there, thank you. Is that repeated in the ARs?
I believe it should be, let's, I'm, let me go through the ARs if you will, and then when we get to there, we'll look. Okay, so the AR then talks very specifically about the persistently dangerous school, and then it goes on page two of three to the, the other intra-district enrollment and different parts of that. The one thing that is different, significantly different, and principals particularly liked this, and I think it will solve a lot of our problems, number four, that instead of waiting till three weeks before school starts in August, late applications will be accepted until May 1st, and that's going to be the deadline where we can then go to 100%. And with the stipulation that if an attendance area student moves into the school, and they will, they will, of course, be placed in their attendance area school, and if there isn't, if that, if that makes it have excessive enrollment, or the capacity is, is over what it should be, then we'll have to ask some of those students that came in last to leave, and then that kind of goes down to where it says terms and conditions, and another new part says the last accepted transfer student in the impacted grade level or subject area will be the first to be displaced.
Maybe they should be told when they get accepted that there's still the possibility-
Yes.
That they have another-
Absolutely, they would be.
Place to go.
Mm-hmm, yes, they would be, they would be notified that, for sure.
I, I would think that, I couldn't find any reference to the choice or the transportation issue in the AR, could you help me?
Okay, well, let me, I'm gonna see if there is, if there isn't, we will add it. Let's see, if, I don't know if you have any other questions on three of three, we did add some very specific language about how the intra-district attendance permits can be revoked.
It just seems, I don't know, a little much to tell people they got into a school with the idea that they might, I mean, that you're then going to be revoking them, but-
Well, we don't-
Know that for sure.
Know that, but what's been happening is we have people hanging out there-
Yeah.
From the lottery in March-
Either way, we don't win.
Right. It's been really hard to tell a parent with a five-year-old, you know, maybe you're gonna get in, but maybe not, I mean-
A parent who lives in the enrollment area.
Well, in the enrollment area, yes, right, exactly, because they didn't get there in time, but we will, we will keep letting all the attendance area students come in up until that first day of school. Um, and you're right, Dr. Noel, I don't see transportation on that.
It'd be very easy to put in page one of three, first, second, third paragraph, right after persistently dangerous school or program improvement school.
Oh, okay, and does that have transportation there?
There's still nothing in there about the district, the district's responsibility to pay for transportation.
Okay, that's a, that is a good place there, and then we'll, how about if I, for the second reading, I'll find an appropriate place to add the transportation piece.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay, then, oh, thank you. Uh, moving then on to the exhibit, which is the same for both intra-district and intra-district, but on, on the intra-district, we named that first, and we put the policy number first. All we've done is add those pieces that I've already spoken to, number two, on the district improvement school, we've added the priority given to lowest achieving children from low-income families, and then also the English learner piece, number seven. On the backside, page two of three, we've added the May 1st date and changed that from the three weeks before the start of school, and the same thing under terms and conditions, we've added that part about the last accepted first out. Any questions about the exhibit? And then on to the intra-district, there's not as many changes, on the first page, one of two, there's a part about an appeal that we didn't have in there before, so we've added that. And, actually, everything else, terms and conditions, it's basically the same language from the other, the last accepted in, first to go, and in here, also, in, when we're looking at impacted school on capacity, the intra-district students are the first ones to be asked before the intra-district, so we go through all of those first. I don't believe anything else, any other changes are of note.
Okay.
So I'll bring it back with the added, or program improvement school, and an appropriate place for transportation on the AR for intra-district.
Any other comments? No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So we're skipping G2, we're on to G3, which is Dr. Noel's, um, item about the no D policy.
Well, I, I think we probably initiated this.
That's just harvest, because we had a conversation once about this.
Uh, when we were talking to Tim Cannold and brought him in out of Rick DeForre's presentations on, on professional learning communities, one of the things that they had decided at their school, or one of the things they were talking about at their school was a no D policy. Their feeling was that they needed to gather information on students early on, needed to know when those students were failing, and needed to move to, needed to intervene so that they either rescued those students, or they simply moved them out of the course early on. So we've been scrambling to find information on a no D policy out of PLC work, out of Adley Stevenson High School, we can't find anything on it. We have found some other information on no D policies, in fact, we brought in an expert on, on English, his name was Jonathan LaMaster, and he worked and was very well-received by our English teachers, high school English teachers, and Robin, perhaps you should account that, or recount that conversation.
Yeah, it was kind of interesting, Jonathan LaMasters was at our Avid Conference, and he does a lot with writing, and both Dr. Sarvis and I went to the beginning session of his presentation to the high school English teachers, and he, he's just an amazing guy, we're, we're having him back, very well-received, and it just, coincidentally, we found out that he is from the school, this high school that we gave you the information on El Cajon, this was a 2003 article, and it really goes through all of the, you know, the reasons why you might want to have a no D, to bring the expectations up, raise the level, you know, you're, you're thinking, okay, all those Ds, D's not good enough, it's really not passing, it's not what we want anyone to pass a class with, we want to go to a real standards-based system where, you know, proficiency, a certain level of proficiency, which we think of kind of like at a C range, at the bottom, would be what we would settle for, and everything else is not good enough, and you, you know, start over. Well, some of the, or, or take it over again, some of the things that they cautioned in this article was that, you know, you really need, before you go here, you really need to invest in a lot of infrastructure, tutoring programs, you know, summer school, night school, Saturday school, all kinds of ways that you're gonna support your students, and you also have to really reteach or, or train teachers to teach to that, and make sure that they, you know, they're not gonna, like, fail way more kids that would be getting Ds. And, and there were some examples in here of how it worked. Well, when we talked to Jonathan LaMasters, he said he was there when that happened, it was his very first year or second year of teaching, and they actually dropped it after four years, and the reason was their F list just grew, it didn't, they found that everything they did to try to pump it up, they had more kids that actually failed. And the other part of this was that the graduation rate decreased, of course, we don't want that, but it, they found it to be really unfair, they were the only school that did that, and so they had students all over the city, this is San Diego area, that, you know, the, the kids passed and these other kids didn't at their school, and so getting into like the Cal State, getting into all the other colleges they were trying to go to, it really made their grade point average go down. So that was their experience. As Dr. Sarvis said, we could not find any information, we had several secretaries, and both he and I looked all over, I looked in all my books, I couldn't find anything from Rick DeForre and Adley Stevenson High School on that. So I, I don't have an update as far as that school, but from Jonathan LaMasters and El Cajon, that's what happened, they gave it up after four years.
Well, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna comment, because in the article it mentioned that there were a couple of schools that had initially dropped the D and then reinstated it because of the impact it was having on students. And one of the things it said that caught my attention is discouraged students may choose to abandon education altogether. Before dropping the D, schools need to invest in tutoring programs, longer office hours for instructors, and teacher training programs to keep struggling students from failing. And I'm wondering, it says such programs cost money, which may explain why Ds appear to be dropped more often in affluent school districts. I'm just wondering if we are in a position to be able to implement, you know, the things that it would require if we were going to make a, a change like that, and I always worry that there will be a disproportionate impact on our, on our already, you know, disproportionately low-achieving students. So my, that, that would be a real concern, especially as it mentioned, it could cause students to not be eligible for other extracurricular activities that might be part of what's keeping them connected to the schools. So I have a lot of concerns about this.
Um, and, and truthfully, I believe, I mean, grades are really interesting, and we were just listening to Anthony Mohammed, who was for Professional Learning Communities, talk last week, saying that, you know, grades really aren't important in the whole system except right in high school, for lots of reasons, usually getting into college and, and for, you know, going to curric, co-curricular activities and such, but the way that grades still in our district and in most places are done are very individual, we're, we're really working toward common standards, common assessments, common, common grading strategies, but we're not there yet, and so I think if you were going to think about doing this no D- And so I think if you were going to think about doing this no D, I think we'd have to do a lot of work around being more consistent through different classes, certainly diff- different, different departments, what is a C, what is a D?
Sounds to me like it's a way of leveraging a lot of change.
Certainly would be change.
Did you, uh, here's, here's, here's the problem, at least as I perceive it. Uh, I, last time I was over at Santa Barbara High, uh, one of the APs told me that, hey, we're all college prep. I was asking what the P's meant on the, uh, course schedule, prep, 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 college prep. Everything is college prep except combo courses, which are early and late in the afternoon. Okay? Uh, I said, what do you mean by college prep? They're all A to G's. They all meet the UCA to G requirements. How can a program that claims to be preparing kids for college and requiring them to take A to G courses accept D's in those courses, when in fact, to get into the, the UC system, you have to have a grade point average, it's not just, you, you take all the A to G courses you want, but you've gotta have a minimum B, or you can't touch the school. Uh, on, on top of that, some pretty good SAT scores. If even the, uh, uh, to get into the, the CSU system, uh, you only have to have a C, actually, it's more flexible, you could even have less than a C average if your SAT scores are high enough. But again, uh, you, having a lot of D's and A to G courses, you're not going to either to, into either of those college systems. So there's some, so it's kind of, I mean, it, it's, it's a bit of a, I don't wanna say a facade, but there's something unreal about, uh, saying, oh, we've got a college prep program here, when in, at the same time saying, we accept D grades. Uh, and I, and I first encountered this incidentally in, in, in the Whittier School District, they had gone to, to all A to G, and I, I said, what, what grade points, what grades? He said, oh, we, we take D's. I said, why did you change that? He said, we afraid we have too many dropouts.
Except I don't, if I can interrupt you for a second, I don't understand, because if you, if a D won't get you into college, then...
One D, you could still make it into the CSU system, yeah, you can still, yeah, it's a B average.
So that's a reason for having a D's, because if you can do it once, you know, it happens sometimes.
If we're talking about, if we're talking about socio-economically disadvantaged kids and low achieving kids, uh, I mean, if you pick up a D, you're gonna have to pick up a balancing grade, and those balancing grades can come very difficult, if, if, if you're already not a high achieving kid. But let, let me go on a little bit about it, and I'll, I'll be quiet. The whole idea of it, uh, is about expectations. It's about trying to raise expectations on a campus. Now, you can, you know, you're, I hear about high expectations out there, ad nauseam, okay? Everybody, oh, we're high expectations. How do you operationally define it? What, what impact does it have? Does it have, what do you do? Uh, and that's what this is about, and I, I found it, you might try, uh, Lawndale High School, okay? And, uh, and because I saw their, they had, uh, uh, API scores for the socio-economically disadvantaged subgroup of 730, which I think would be, we would love to have, wouldn't we? Uh, and, uh, and I, you know, when I find a school like that, I get on the phone, hey, what are you doing down there? And, and for, but the only person I could get to was, uh, somebody in the district office and the curriculum director. And she said, well, they had, they, they have a no D policy, and, and she, and, uh, it, it is causing some problems, because they have three high schools, and, and in fact, people are coming to Lawndale because they like that, which, which is an interesting thing. So I find, and I talked to, and, and she, but she said, it may also be, be, because at Lawndale, they have a lottery system, okay? And they may, and there's something involved, she thinks higher performance comes just by virtue of having made that choice to, to want to go to that school. I talked to the principal of Lawndale High, and she says, maybe, but I don't think so, given the kids I see coming in the door, and she, and she's, what little I could learn on the telephone, the, the no D policy seemed to be working, and she, she said, it's not, it's not accounting for all the variance in that API, in that API score of 730, but it's, but it helps. And, and it's, and again, it's about expectations, that's why I was interested. Uh, your comments are, are, and, and Mrs. Corderas are, are absolutely right, I mean, it's, you know, you, you certainly wouldn't do this, uh, totally decontextualize, you know, just, okay, here we go, no D's, fish, sink or swim. It, it, it looks like it would be, uh, you know, a big, a big deal, but a way of leveraging some of the changes that you might like to do in any event. Okay? And that's all I have to say about it, I thought it was an intriguing idea.
Um, just a quick comment, I like all of the reasons why you would do it, and I understand all of the reasons why you wouldn't do it, but my thought was, and, and there is a tremendous expense to the infrastructure that you would have to put into place in order to accomplish something like this. But if for whatever reason the board wanted to continue to, to, to consider this, to investigate this, um, why wouldn't we look at implementing it at a junior high school, or making a pilot at a junior high, where your grades don't have the same high impact that they do in high school, whether it makes you eligible for CIF, or whether it makes you eligible for a particular college? Why wouldn't you wanna start it with younger students? Obviously, we don't have an A through F grading system in our elementary schools, why wouldn't you wanna start it in a junior high where you create that impact, where you're dealing with smaller numbers of students in order to pilot it? And you may be, uh, creating a summer school situation for a lot of kids who need to be occupied during the summertime. Um, so I, I just, if we're gonna pursue it, and obviously, I won't be here, uh, I would suggest looking at it at the junior high level, um, before the high school level, and then growing the program across the junior highs, and then obviously growing it into the high schools.
Kids come in with the expectation.
I have to agree that, that I think it's a great idea.
Right.
Uh, but you do have to have a lot more built in. Uh, but I think it's all wrapped up in the larger issue of how you measure learning, because our difficulty with giving a D is, why would you give a student credit for learning so little in a class? I mean, it's really a seat time model rather than a learning model. We finally have standards, and we're moving to standards-based report cards, at least at the elementary level, and I suspect that we will be at the junior high level and the high school level, and we will be completely revamping, I predict we will completely revamp, or revamp our system, because i- if you look at our AR, uh, you know, the guidance on what a D is, the low average achievement, sixty to sixty-nine percent, is very little guidance about how much learning that is compared to the standards. So I really think that we will be evolving toward a more standards-based reporting of, of learning, of how much learning we've had.
Well, and getting back to the idea of PLCs and standards-based learning, I think that there is more PLC activity on junior high campuses than there is on high school campuses, and I think that there are more rubrics in pr- in place for, um, evaluating, are you giving the same kind of B that I'm giving? But if you wanted to take it even smaller, you know, to press ahead with something like this, you could pick one core class, you could pick English in seventh grade at one junior high school. Um, you're talking then, depending on the junior high, about, you know, three or four hundred students in one class only. Um, I, I'm just throwing it out there.
I would disagree with that one, Mrs. Harvas, for, because I think that, that it has to be embedded in a, in a school cultural context. It, it's, it's a real whole, you're trying to create expectations for the whole school, and it's very hard to have the whole school, or the, you know, all, all of the school except this group, hey, a D is an okay thing, and here's this group, uh, uh, I don't think, I don't think that works. And, and in fact, that may be, and I haven't brought this up, there, there are a number of small, uh, charter schools that have the policy, and, and they're doing very well. I'm not, again, I, I, I know better than a single variable model, there are a lot of things that work there, but they're, but they, they do very well with it. By the same token, one of my favorite schools, Sager's High School, doesn't have one, and they're doing a great job with, you know, seven eighty-eight with the dis- socioeconomic disability, uh, off the charts. Uh, and I, and I've talked with the principal there, and she says, well, you, you just used the word, they watch these kids like a hawk, and when they see a kid's having trouble, they're on it. And, 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 and they don't let the kids get the D's. Uh, they don't have to have a policy. And, and, and they, as a result, and they're a school of choice, and they only lose 1.19% of their kids a year.
Well, I think...
Well, I think that's...
You could just nail it with "school of choice."
Yeah, but, but, but that's not what's holding them there.
That's also my, uh, take on this, is that, number one, I think there is a difference between an F and a D. I mean, if, if we believe that teachers make distinctions between an A and a B, a B and a C, we have to assume that they make a difference between a D and an F. An F, a- as it says here, is little or no achievement, a D is below average achievement. So this, I think a D does, in some cases, represent that the students have achieved something. They haven't achieved what they need to achieve, they haven't achieved what, uh, we would consider satisfactory achievement, but they have achieved something as opposed to little or nothing. The other thing is, uh, that I think we're maybe mischaracterizing, uh, with the, the grades a little bit, in the sense that, um, because we award a grade doesn't mean that we accept it or desire it, because we're not talking about eliminating Fs. Um, and certainly Fs are less desirable than D's are. Um, so I think it's possible to have grades on our, that we award, with the expecta- with the understanding that they're not desirable grades. They're not what we're aiming at for our students, they're not what we want our students to achieve, and for most students, they're not what they want to achieve either. But it is part of the stratification. Um, I, I just think that, uh, this is something that would, that is a lot of undertaking for a year like we're in right now. Um, that it, that it may require a lot of staff, uh, resource time, a lot of, uh, additional work, that I'm not sure we would be in a position to implement, given the fiscal situation we face. Um, that I'm wondering if that staff time might be better used to look at other ways of helping students not to get a D, um, in the, in the system that we already have, so that it's, we're actually using it to its best, its, its best purposes. Um, I don't, I wouldn't have any objections to eliminating D's if I thought it was really gonna result in students getting Cs. But I'm not convinced that that will happen, or to...
One of my, one of my heroes, uh, since I came into this field, was Jaime Escalante, and I've heard him speak on several occasions, and he had a wonderful way of saying it, and only his voice could do it, but he said, "Students rise to the level of expectations." And, uh, and, and that's what this is about. It's about creating expectations and challenging students, and, and maybe, maybe, maybe this is not the only way to do it, I'm sure it's not, I'm convinced it's not.
Well, he did it in a situation that had, that awarded D's, he just challenged students not to get them.
He, he, his, another anecdote in his speeches, a student came to him and said, "Why did you give me this F, Mr. Escalante?" He said, "Because this F is the lowest grade they allow me to give." Expectations are what made Escalante expectations, and a lot of hard work from the teacher, grant that. Okay? And I, and I'm, all I'm saying is, we, we talk expectations, but I, I haven't seen much come by us that is, that explicitly says, here's how we're raising expectations. And yet everyone understands that's probably the biggest single variable accounting for, uh, the differences, you know, in performance in different, uh, educational settings, is expectations. If we can't do it this way, maybe we can find another way, but I thought I would make the proposal.
And thank you, certainly is discussion. Um, I had one more last thought on this, is I don't quite get the difference between eliminating D's and having D's but not allow them to be a passing grade. I mean, you can let people get D's but not allow them to count that class as passing, that's another option. Um, anyways, it sounds like something, we'll come back when we're at a different stage, perhaps, when the grading is different.
Yeah, I'll bring it back to the next board.
Yeah, next board, different, different people. Um, it's ten thirty-two, do we want to do, does the board, um, does it please the board to go on to G four, or to wait till, to put, put these two for, um, at another meeting?
I propose that we wait, it's a bewitching hour for me.
Okay. Then, um, we have no consent agenda to go back to, um, we've, any coming events, anybody else? Um, board comments and correspondence?
Our, our coming event, do we have a dinner this week?
There is on, at Beelton on Thursday, I'm unable to go on Thursday, first one I'm missing, and...
I will be attending, it sounds like.
I don't know, too.
I'm assuming, others?
Okay, and, uh, we have a meeting, we do not have a meeting next week's election, yeah, exciting, and, um, the week after that is, uh, Veterans Day, so we're not here then either. It is in three weeks, yes, three weeks we're here, so, um, I will see you there then.